Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order at 5:30, 4:00 PM. And now I'd like to come on giving our Doran Boss to read the land at home.
I'd like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of Sanders is located on Treaty One territory of the traditional lands of the Nationality, Free, Hoji Creek, Dakota, and Denny Peoples, and the national homeland of the Red River Metis. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and cooperation.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. We resolve the council about the agenda as amended with the addition and deletion of the following items. Under Correspondence for Action, add 9.14 Manitoba Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Tour Network Committee. And remove the item 13.1 Armistice and Endless Coast Summer Report and 13.2 South African Discipline Foundation or Member Nomination Report. Could I have a mover, please? Chairman Doran Boss, seconded by Councilor Cypher, any to the comments, all favor, here. Now we have a tribute to make. On a sad note, I wish to advise of the pattern of Jean Carroll at on May 6th. Jean was an elected councillor in St. Andrews in 1989 and re-elected for a second term where she served as Deputy Reap until 1995. Jean was very community-minded, spent countless hours volunteering at school, the church, and the St. Andrews Community Clark. She will always be remembered as a wonderful and caring lady. On behalf of myself and council, I extend condolences to her husband Elmer and their families. Thank you. Now we'll start with the planning process. Welcome, everyone, to the planning portion of the meeting. The hearings will proceed as follows. Number one, Red River Planning Board staff will present the application. Mr. Santenzing is here. The applicant will then make a presentation on the application. Those registered in support will make a presentation. Those registered as opposed will then make presentations. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concerns raised by council or presenters. At the end of each presentation, council may ask for clarification but will not enter into debate. Please note that all person speaking must address the chair. And at the end of the presentation, council will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no more presentation accepted on any matter. Council will then consider each matter separately and provide a decision once all the hearings, the applications are heard. Thank you, and so now we will proceed. I know two people came in when we started the meeting. Hi. Would you, I have the sign-in sheets. Will you be speaking to one of the matters?
I don't know if I need to speak on this, but back.
Which one are you here for?
192 River Road.
Oh, I see. Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Just remind me. I'll put on your. You can choose to speak at that time. Okay, first matter is, oh, we open the public hearing. We resolve a council hereby open the public hearings for the following planning applications scheduled for May 14. Conditionally use number 8-2024, 12-2024, variation order number 35-2024, and variation order number 36-2024. Zoning bylaw amendment number 4394 and subdivision number S243044. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Hahn, Seconder. Councilor Feeblecorn, all favor, Mary. We'll start with conditional use number 8-2024, 8456, ETH number nine. Mr. Singh, please continue, please.
Hi, Mayor, good evening, council. This is conditional use application CU824. The subject property is located at 8456 Highway 9, and the applicant wishes to allow for a rental space with a liquor permit option in the suburban residential zone. This is the user request table. As I said before, the applicant is wishing to establish a rental space with a liquor permit option. This is the location map. The subject property is located at the intersection of Highway 9 and Tandy Boy Road. This is the site plan submitted by the applicant. They wish to use the existing church building as a rental space. So for council's consideration, this subject property has been used as a church since 1979. A conditional use application was approved way back in 79 and 82 for the church hall and Sunday School. Council must consider whether the proposed rental space with liquor option aligned with the general nature of the surrounding area. Also, for council's consideration, we have no record of an occupancy permit on this building. Therefore, if this is approved, an occupancy will be required from our department. All the zoning requirements like parking, building code requirements, they will be addressed at the parking stage. We did not receive any objections from the provincial department or the RM administration. If the council wishes to approve this application, we have six conditions. Number one, this use is limited to what is proposed in this application. Any changes will require any approval. Number two, applicant owner obtains all the required permits from Red River Planning and the RM of St. Andrews. Number three, vehicle parking must remain on the subject property or within the following permitted areas as per the submitted site plan. Dedicated shoulder parking along the north side of the Tandy Boy Road directly adjacent to the subject property. Number four, all signage shall be compliant with section 3.28 of the bylaw. Use of the property must adhere to the St. Andrews noise bylaw, and the applicant owner to obtain and maintain the annual business license from the RM. Thank you. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, council. Councilor Hunt.
So in your report, there are two different places you have. On page three, you have in bold letters, I don't know why you guys have to put them in bold letters, but it says you should an applicant owner will need to obtain an occupancy permit, will need. Then further down, you have may need. So it's contradicting.
Basically, when they do reach out to Manitoba Liquor and Lottery for the liquor license, that will trigger an occupancy permit. And we've been dealing with this kind of situations for other properties as well. When they apply for the liquor permit, they will send us a request for occupancy permit. So they will need an occupancy permit. Otherwise, the liquor authority won't issue the liquor permit.
But even if it's a church?
Right, because it's a change of, I mean, not a change of use, but like a conditional use application. It's an additional, addition to an existing use.
But that's the difference. It's not a change of use, though.
No. It's not a change of use. But it's an addition to what's going, the existing operation.
Was your occupancy permits back in 1979?
We couldn't find any.
But was there, were they required back in 1979?
Um, yeah, they were required.
But like I say, you have two different, may or shall is two different. I like the may a lot better. Let's go with that one, but.
Okay, we can add a condition that they may need a permit from our department on the liquor permit.
And who decides that, then?
It would be a part from the liquor department.
Okay.
So once they reach out to them to obtain their permit, that will trigger an occupancy. That's what happened with the other application.
Because it's alarming, then you say may need to be brought up to building codes, but you're not changing the use of the building, though.
Right, and then those are the things we can, I guess, figure out once the use is approved. Because that would have to be the building department that looks into this. Had there been a previous record of an occupancy permit, and these things are kind of easy to address, like with the other school care or the daycare we did with the existing school. Same condition, there was a record, so it was fairly easy process.
Yeah, but the occupancy permits are a lot different, or the criteria is a lot different now than it was in 1979.
Right.
Yeah. Yes, could be the problem.
It could be.
Unless we take care of that problem and not.
And as a council, you have a court.
Good, thank you.
Okay, then you make no overlap?
Yeah.
Thank you. Council members, are there any other questions? Can I let the call on? Who is speaking from the church? Young man's spokesperson, if it's Wendy or Aaron or Wendy?
And Don.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is Wendy Church. I'm the current Chairperson of the Clandwell United Church. I just would like to read our letter of intention that we sent in with the application, in case you didn't have an opportunity to, to read it. The Clandwell United Church was established, established in its current location in 1901 and was rebuilt in 1982. Over the years, the church basement has been used for meetings, workshops, Sunday School, day camps, bridal and baby showers, and funeral lunches for approximately 50 people. We are requesting a conditional use permit so we can apply to Manitoba Liquor and Lotteries to become a rental space with a liquor permit option. A smaller rental space with this option would be an access to our community plus provide an additional revenue stream for our church. The church basement flooded twice in 2022, and the insurance claim restoration project was completed in 2023, thus creating a beautiful updated space. The seating capacity and parking requirements will not change from its current use. And then regarding a comment on page two regarding the no occupancy permit. In 2022, the Red River Planning District supplied us with a copy of the original building permit, which was dated 1982, which indicated that the building plans were stored at the Selkirkan District Planning Area Board. Those building plans haven't been located, and we wonder if an occupancy permit was issued and lost along with those building plans.
Thank you, councillors, mayor. I may be repeating what Lori Hunt was talking about there. But I think you have this document in front of you, but on page two, and it's bolded, dark bolded, it says they have no record of the occupancy permit. And we will need, the word is will, need to obtain an occupancy permit from the planning district, and the building may need to be brought into compliance with the current Manitoba Building Code. But that is inconsistent with what is on page four. Following information is for council's consideration, I guess, point three there. Again, no record of the occupancy permit being issued. If the council chooses to approve this application, the applicant owner may need. It said will on page two, it says may on page four. So that has a bit of a concern to us. We have been occupying the building since 1982. The basement, and you probably, all of you have driven by the church on your way to meetings here, but it's not a large facility. The occupancy of the basement might be forty, forty, fifty people tops. And all we're asking for is the ability to, if renters so choose to get permit. So I just wanted to point out that inconsistency, and I, I guess it asks you for consideration in your discussions to look at the importance of that difference.
Sorry, Don, can you just mention your conversation with Liquor and Lotteries?
Sorry?
Can you mention your conversation with Liquor and Lotteries? About just needing them to sign off? With Liquor and Lotteries, when you talk to them?
I should add, too, that a number of months ago, Liquor and Lotteries advised that if the CAO from the RM went to write a letter about approving use of the building, we wouldn't need a conditional use permit. But now, I guess that's not the case. So that's why we're here today, and so I'd ask for consideration of that as well. Thank you.
Our congregation has served the community for 123 years. And like all communities of faith, attendance is dwindling. Our congregation is not in a financial position to spend thousands of dollars on an architect to obtain an occupancy permit. As far as the definition options of the RM zoning are concerned, we interpret the uses of our building as a parish hall, not as a banquet hall. And I quickly looked up a couple of definitions that I thought were interesting. I'm going to share with you if you don't mind. So the Collins Dictionary calls a parish hall "a room or building associated with a parish church used by the local community for social or charitable activities, although not necessarily religious activities." Wikipedia says a church hall or parish hall is a room or building associated with a church, generally for community or charitable use. In smaller and village communities, it is often a separate building near the church. While on more restricted urban sites, it may be in the basement or a wing off the main building. Activities in the hall are not necessarily religious, but parts of local community life similar to in an assembly hall. So we don't feel being called a banquet hall is accurate. Just wanted to say we appreciate the snow clearing service. The RM supplies our parking area each winter. Thank you for your years of service to our church. It does not go unnoticed. Our intent with the, with the conditional use permit today is to make our church building a community space and not just a place of worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Wendy? All right.
So this is not going to be a big profit for like, what are you going to charge for this kind of a?
Yet to be determined, like maybe 50, 100 bucks, depends. Like, it's not, it's not a big money maker, but
100, okay.
Yeah, we've had, like, we've had a few requests for showers, and then we didn't get the, the booking because they wanted to serve wine. You know, that's basically all we're looking at, is providing that option, or if a family wants to have a Christmas dinner down there or something like.
Trying to do things properly.
Yeah, it's not going to be a social event type place, I don't think, so.
I guess this is a question.
Oh, another question, sorry?
No, it's actually going to be for, sorry, not, not for you, sorry. This is going to be a general.
Okay.
Does it need applicant owner to obtain business license? Or churches require business licenses?
Not typically, no, but I could see it possibly being a condition for the use as a hall.
Okay. But I think maybe a church would eliminate that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a general question here, just major for Santen. If the condition use, I see conditional use was obtained as conditional use permit to facilitate and authorize a Sunday School operation, so if that information is lost, where's the responsibility left? Doesn't, shouldn't be lying with the church to find this occupancy permit. This is something that should be already at records, already at the RM PDs.
I looked through the records. I can find the conditional use records, but just not the occupancy record. I can find the building permit, both the conditional uses, but not the occupancy.
So you can't find the plans, though, neither, but plans would have been probably coincided with the occupancy permit, because you need the plans to, to prove for the occupancy permit, so.
Yeah.
And you have all the other.
Find anything.
Okay, so.
Yeah, if the RM has any records or if you can point me to a direction, I can probably video or just do research, but yeah, I couldn't find anything.
Well, would these documents still have been with the Selkirk planning, before Red River?
I think so.
Been in the Selkirk Town Hall?
Yes, but I think the files were transferred to us. So I'm not sure if everything was transferred. I believe it was. From the information we have, those were all the documents we both the conditional uses and building permit.
And you have a question?
I guess just a comment, I guess, obviously, if the building was inspected and permitted, then it would have been licensed for occupancy, or it wouldn't have passed building inspection.
I mean, yeah, you could say that. Typically, it would be, so building permit is issued, and the next step is to obtain an occupancy, if it's not residential. That's usually the next step. So if it was obtained, yeah, everything would have been inspected.
Right, right, so chances are it was obtained with the plan, like, the final inspection. That's not even what the purpose of the final inspection is.
If it was obtained, yes, all the inspections would have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Linda Hart, would you like to speak, or you're just here? I'm just starting. Wendy Royster?
Sorry, I can't reach her. That's a big friction, no, I'm.
Oh, you're in support as well. Okay. Marilyn Owen Wilkinson?
You're in support.
Okay. Okay, we've heard from everybody. Okay, thank you. Anything for the council? Next item. Conditionally use number 12-2024. Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the conditional use application CU1224. The subject property is located at Level 97, 1201 Breezy Point Road. The applicant wishes to establish a kennel on the property that is zoned as a culture limited. This is the user request table. As per the zoning bylaw, kennels require conditional use from the council. This is the location map. As you can see, the property fronts Breezy Point Road. This is the site plan provided by the applicant. The applicant is proposing eight dog houses that are about eight foot by eight foot, with a 30, 32 feet long run. For council's consideration, this, the applicant has indicated that they would like to operate a kennel involving breeding and grooming dogs. For council's consideration, limited livestock activities are permitted in this zone, although there may be some noise impacts with the kennel operation. The RM's bylaw enforcement has expressed some concerns regarding the noise complaints. And they required clarification on the number of dogs and the existing structures. Therefore, we've added a condition of approval that all these concerns be addressed if the council wishes to approve this. The RM of Andrews has requested more conditions, and we did not receive any objections from the circulating agencies. If the council wishes to approve this application, we have fourteen conditions that are listed on the screen. The major one is number eight, where there's a recommendation to limit the number of dogs over four months to a maximum of 10. And the owner to obtain annual licenses for all the dogs that are over four months old, as per the, the bylaw. Thank you. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Singh? No. Okay, we have the applicants. Paul, I'm sorry, I can't reach the last one.
Waiting.
Shwaying, okay, thank you. Would you like to stick to your application?
Well, mainly, I want the permit to keep the dogs so I can still get rid of them. I have been running without a kennel license. And since COVID, the numbers have dropped through the roof. So I just want time to get rid of the pups that I have still and keep my breed. I haven't bred actively for two years now. So that is my purpose here. Also, I want to move the kennels to the north side of the property, farther away from my nearest neighbor. That's about it.
Thank you, council. Do you have any questions on the, 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 your Doran Boss?
Are you a breeder, or your kennel, or both?
My mother was a breeder about five years ago now. When she passed, I kept a few of her dogs to try it, and yeah, now that's turned around and bit me in the hiney, so, but yeah. I did breed for just about four years.
So how many dogs do you have on site currently?
Fifty.
Five zero?
Yeah. Thirty somewhere pups from various leftover from various breeds, so.
How many males and females do you have for breeding?
I have well, also, probably five, five females. Nope. One Pomeranian male. And I've got a pair of whites, or Goldens, and two Reds. And there's some of them that I've tried, I don't like, so I'm getting rid of some of the breeders also.
How many litters a year?
Pardon?
How many litters do you do a year? Or you're not doing any at all?
Actively, I was doing four litters, two in the spring, two in the fall. And now I've had one accidental last fall, and that was it.
So about anywhere between 30 to 40 pups coming in?
Yeah. And again, they were moving. I find them good homes. I don't sell dogs at the gas station. They all come on site, and we keep in contact. And most of the customers keep in contact. And they have a one-week trial period. If it doesn't work the first couple of days, they can bring them back and get their money back. Also have a return policy. If something happens, their lives change, whatever, they can surrender the dog. I mean, presently, I have one surrender that I traded for a calmer dog, and also have a rescue right now. So.
So these are on paper? Are they, they're on paper dogs?
Yeah, I've got one, one registered male. And I want to get rid of him, too. I don't like him, so. But they all, basically, second generation, most of them are from CKC or UKC parents. They just don't have the paperwork.
So you want to get out of the business completely?
No, I just want to hang on to the breeders that I want to keep.
How many is that?
It's six, six breeders and then a couple of house dogs. So that's why we applied for a permit for 10. So, but six breeders I want to keep. And some of the breeders that I've brought in, I already sold already again before I even tried them, because it's, this isn't turning around anytime soon. So I might be keeping those dogs for another four or five years. If it don't turn around, I'm not breeding them, period. So the permit is mainly just for me to get rid of the pups I have. So.
Thanks.
Council members, any other?
How many months are the pups right now?
The oldest ones I have, I got two left. That was from two litters. I have two males left, and they are about 26 months. They're just over two years, have about 16, I guess, that are a year and a half, two, up to two years now. So there's always a good part of the litter sold, and then for whatever reason, weather, politics, all of a sudden, it just stopped again, and then so one of the whites, that's two years old now. I sold one last fall, so they're, they're going as replacements as people lose their dogs. They're not new pet owners, basically. They're, I'm selling mainly for replacements right now, so. And yeah, I've sold six of the pups from the winter breed. I have three left of those, so. With the weather, make some green grass now, those should go quickly too now. So.
So with the recommendation of, of 10, what would, what is your thought on that?
Yeah, I want to keep the breeders that I want to keep, which is six. And then we've got a few house dogs. Two of them are fixed. There's a male in there that's fixed, but I have to tame him down before I can get rid of him, so. And he has
Six breeders, but then how long do you figure it would take to get, you said there's 30 something?
The sooner the better. For me, it's costing me a lot.
And you said, and over the past couple of years, how many have you sold?
In the last two years, probably about 20. So I'm hoping for the best here right now, but so far this spring, it's been slow. Got people interested, but they haven't done the final deal yet. They've come looked, and they're imminent on somehow. Done the final deal yet, they've come looked and they're imminent on somehow. The backed out, one is supposed to be moving to B C now, so he was interested, he had bought one of my breeders last spring. He wanted a second dog, you know, so he doesn't know for sure if he's moving yet or not, so I'm waiting for that one. There was a pup sale, he looked and he had family coming over, so I don't know about that one yet. And then the older ones, I'm just gonna start doing single videos for them. And advertising that way, so.
So one of the conditions here, it says uh dogs over the age of four months not exceed ten. So if this was to be approved and those conditions have to be met before approval is given, how will you comply with that condition?
I'm asking, that's why I'm here, I'm asking for time to get rid of these dogs. It's not that I actively wanna breed, I just want time to sell these off, find them good homes. And again, I'm not somebody that sells puppies at the gas station, so.
Maybe Mr. Blanner has an answer for that link. That's one of the conditions and it's stipulated in the conditions and stipulated in one of the letters of objection. You know, so how, how is that gonna be enforced that that's followed, cause that's, you know, seventy five percent of his animals will have to go then, cause they won't. Comply under that condition.
So I guess if the R M wants to off the number, that could be one option. Uh cause that four month number, that comes from the pet license thing by law that the R M has. So all the pets over four month have to be registered and the number that is up for discussion. If the council wants to increase the number, then yeah, or you can add a timeline if we approve this for a year. Uh and then you come back.
And then the dogs are three years old then in a year, so.
Right.
Which compounds the problem, so.
Right, I mean, the thing is, the use as now is not allowed in this, so it's not permitted use. That's why it's conditional and it's up for council's discussion.
So I guess the question I asked though, like if, if there is no time given, what would you do with those animals then?
Um. Well, the neighbor wants to do it and what I wanna do is two different things, but. Um yeah, uh I wanna move them on the other side to. Help my neighbor out there and from what I gather, it's not the noise, it's the barking. He's made a phone call a couple of weeks ago and he complained about constant barking. I couldn't figure it out, cause I'm in the yard all day and it's not my dog, it's on the other side of the bridge that was barking, so it's. Not the noise and. I don't know if he just doesn't like barking, you hear the hearties and everything else all day there. But um.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions in the applicants? Okay, we have one objection on file council received from um. Uh on this letter from the Moores. Uh Todd Epps, you're in opposition, would you like to speak to this matter?
Sure. Well, I live right across the road on Breezy Point. And uh the barking started getting really bad about two years ago, just after covid. Uh the noise of barking is day and night. And you can imagine fifty dogs up front in your yard, barking, cars drive by, pedestrians walking down the road, that's all I hear. Uh the one question I do have is the max, he says ten at one time. So if he has, say, six breeds or six uh bigger dogs, what about the puppies? Is that classified as a dog or is it classified as a puppy? Um. And I know he wants to get rid of the dogs, but why apply a kennel license if you're trying to get rid of them? And. That's all I got.
Council members, do you have any questions?
Uh you know, just for the, in the conditions, you're wondering about uh whether it's. Referred to as an adult dog or pup, it it indicates for the condition, it would be anything over four months old. So those two year old or one year old dogs would be considered a whole.
Okay.
One dollar.
Okay.
How's marketing?
Yes, uh do you believe that the move of kennels would uh solve the problem?
Well, I think it's gonna push the kennels more towards the highway, so it's gonna be more traffic on that side. Of uh was it three oh two there in the corner?
So you don't think it'll help, or you think it'll help?
He's put up noise barriers already and it really hasn't helped. He's tried.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
There's one else on that application, the next L M. Is variation number thirty five two oh two four one ninety two zero the road, uh Mr. Singh, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh this is where it's application V O thirty five twenty twenty four, the subject property is located at one ninety two River Road. Uh the applicant wishes to increase the mean height from of accessory structure from fifteen to twenty feet uh in the rural residential zone. This is the variance request table, as I said before, the height of the accessory structure is increasing from fifteen to twenty. This is the location map, the property runs River Road. This is the uh site plan provided by the applicant, the structure is proposed right here. So for council's consideration, this application came forward to the council uh under V O five. Uh and council approved it. Uh the reason why this is back is because the the mean height was translated incorrectly. These were the plans submitted with the previous application, so this was considered to be a twenty foot mark. And mean height is usually the midpoint, so this came out to be sixteen point five, considering this was seven feet. So the variance was varied from fifteen to sixteen point five. Uh but when the applicant applied for a building permit, uh this was the uh the final plans that came. So you can see this is sixty foot and then that three point five foot gets added on, so it's close to twenty foot, the mean height. So the approved previously was sixteen and a half, but it is close to twenty. So like I said before, the building plans that were submitted with the per- permit application, uh the height was made differently. Uh and council had previously approved V O four, so V O five twenty twenty four. Uh in considering all the scenario, we waived off the fee completely, uh since applicant had to reapply. Uh this application was circulated to the municipality and the R M, we did not see many uh comments or conditions on this proposal. Uh if the council wishes to approve this application, we just have three standard conditions. Uh number one, the variance is limited to what is being proposed, any changes requiring approval. Number two, the applicant removed the existing two canvas shelters from the property. And number three, the applicant updates all the required permits from Red River Plan District. Thank you, if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Councilor.
So when the plans were put in for the for the permit.
Right.
So who calculated the mean height?
Uh plan reviewer.
Okay. So did he have to pay for this application?
For variance, no, this was all waived off.
Okay.
No, no money was charged.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Well, my question is, is that the applicant to move the two canvas structures or do they have to be removed? Cause they increase the height?
It it was uh, I guess, under the rural residential zone, you're allowed to have maximum of two. And originally, it was stated that the proposed structure will be removed, uh that's why they're proposing a new building. So it was just a condition for them, just so they can follow up on the original plans. And it was the same condition for the previous application.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, the applicant, is there anything you wish to add?
Uh no, I think so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item is um. Variation or number thirty six two oh two four eleven thirty three to one eleven forty seven Breezy Point Road. Uh Mr. Singh, please proceed.
Thank you, ma'am, uh this is variance application V O thirty six twenty twenty four, the subject property is located at eleven thirty three, eleven forty seven Breezy Point Road. Uh the applicant wishes to increase the access width from the required thirty five feet. Uh to forty five feet and eleven inches as per the section three point seventeen point two of the bylaw. Uh this is the section that says uh maximum width of the any joint ingress and each rest driveway. Uh along the street line shall be thirty five feet, uh but as per the plans, it is forty five feet and eleven inches. This is the location map, as you can see, properties are split across from Highway four and all the way to Breezy Point Road. This is the site plan uh submitted by the applicant, they're proposing tree nurseries, which is all a permitted use. And then this is the driveway, it's supposed to be thirty five feet and it's forty five feet. So like I said before, uh the applicant intends to establish a tree nursery and a greenhouse, uh those are all permitted uses. And property will gain access from all the turning. Uh this application was circulated to the R M of St Andrews and uh environmental compliance and enforcement. And we did not receive any objections or concerns on this proposal. If the uh council wishes to approve this application, we just have uh three standard conditions. Uh this variance is limited to what is being proposed, any changes would require any approval. Uh the applicant owner of seen all the required permits from Red River Planning and the R M of St Andrews. Uh we received a comment from uh the provincial department, a couple of hours ago. And then that's condition number three, uh they asked for preliminary traffic information. Uh if required, so all these conditions will put in just so the applicant gets infected the provincial department, uh just so there is no issues. Uh thank you, if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, council members, any questions?
So the first question is, is why do you need a variance for this, like it's a. They're gonna have large trucks going in there, I can see the size diameter.
Right.
Is critical, but width. So is this our zoning by law or is this the time zoning by law?
It's the uh the R M's by law, zoning by law, cause this is the section.
So.
Three point seven eight point two.
Yeah, so we should look at that because we all know farmers machinery getting bigger, larger, larger, like. It's it's a detriment to the crossing of of collapsing it if you don't have it wide enough.
And same with the business park, I guess, um I think the R M was struggling with the uh the width issue there as well. But it's in the by.
We need to do a by law change on that, cause it's, you know, I can see the size diameter, but not length, is. It's um and I understand in some places we have had a length because of steaming, you know, in certain areas, cause it's. For steaming culverts, you know?
Right.
And that kinda stuff, but not for this, but that condition number three that you had on there, like. It would instead maybe required like that's preliminary traffic information.
Right. Uh I mean, cause it's a provincial highway eight, although it doesn't gain access from the highway, um I guess the traffic would be. Eventually merging into or into the highway, so the comment I received a couple of hours ago was. Uh that get the applicant to give us some preliminary uh traffic projections or some information. And if the council wants, they can take that. But they were also last minute, so.
Yeah.
And they're not even open yet, how are you gonna know how much traffic?
Yeah.
Gonna to a business, sorry, gonna open. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Council members, any other questions? Okay, next item is um. Item four point four point one zoning by law amendment number four three nine four one sixty List Road. Are you speaking to this or?
I can give like a brief presentation and then I guess if the R M.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got something to share afterwards.
Doctor, if you stand up please.
Uh so this is like a combined hearing for uh both the by law amendment and subdivision application. Uh the subject property is located at one sixty List Road. And we're wishing to rezone the portion of the subject property from airport industrial park, two parks and recreation. Uh to facilitate a recreational use and also subdivided into two lots of ten point four acres and sixty nine point six acres. Uh leaving a big residual chunk of six hundred and sixty four acres where the existing airports. Uh this is the location map, as you can see, this is the uh the northeastern portion of the airport property. This is the development plan map, as per the development plan, this whole area is designated as business park. This is the airport uh concept plan that was approved, uh in this concept plan, this area or this portion was identified. Uh for recreation use, uh that it was approved. Uh this is the zoning map, as you can see, this property is currently zoned A A, therefore industrial park. Uh a little summary of the lots for the subdivision, both the lots are, they meet the minimum required sixty thousand square feet and they meet the uh width as well. So all the lots are in compliance with the zoning bylaws. This is the subdivision application map, so basically uh there'll be two lots, this is the bigger one, the sixty nine point six acres. And then this is the uh smaller ten point four acres. So the applicant that is the R M, they wish to rezone eighty acres in total. Uh and this is currently vacant northeast portion of the subject property from A I P to P R. Uh the subject property is surrounded by areas that are designated as general development to the east resource and agriculture to the north, south and west. Uh St Andrews uh secondary plan identifies the uh the location of the new recreation complex on this exact portion. Amendment of transportation and infrastructure have requested some preliminary traffic projections as part of the subdivision application. Uh St Andrews Airport had uh provided detailed comments regarding various aspects such as heights. Uh drainage fencing, lighting, uh Canada land use and proposed many fixed shelter corridor. Uh we did not receive any objections from the uh circulating agencies for both the rezoning and subdivision application. Uh in terms of the rezoning, we recommend that the uh the council gives it a second reading. Uh and if required, then the third reading. And for the subdivision application, we just have uh four conditions that were requested by different departments, uh number one. Uh provide written confirmation from Amendment of Transportation that the preliminary tra- traffic projections have been addressed. Uh number two, the applicant owner provided written confirmation from Archaeological Assessment Services. Um as they plan to do a site visit to assess potential impact of heritage resources. Uh number three, the applicant owner submits written confirmation from hydro that easements have been entered into. And number four, which is just on the safe side, that this uh this bylaw receives a third reading. And it is successfully rezoned from A I P to P R. Thank you, if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council members, you have any question? The only one I have is number two. About the Archaeological Assessment Services Unit?
Right.
Isn't, I've only seen them being done if you're by the river. Or are applying it now to every property?
Hmm not sure, it was just a comment from the plums. I'm, and you're correct, like I've seen them request this kind of uh site visits and analysis for properties that. That are close to the Red River, uh I haven't really seen them that far, far, but yeah, they requested this time.
Councilor Slicker, can we not uh remove them? Can we not remove that?
I I think there's uh, there's two mountains of. Of dirt, they're heavy, had spread out all over the site, so.
Uh we can remove that. Yeah, it was being, it wasn't there from eighteen hundred, no, just there last three, four years.
So so just a question, like you send letters out to, I counted fourteen or fifteen different agencies. I know St Andrews Airport commented on, but they refer to the. Which is hard to read. Um called Airport Zoning Regulations.
Right.
So you don't send a uh uh letter to Transport Canada or Nap Canada?
Uh no, we haven't sent this one.
But you send it like to Archaeological Dig and.
Nap Canada is, I guess, the federal agency.
Okay. It's nice to know that they're okay with it though, that we don't run into any like it's our property.
Yeah.
We don't run into any problems down the road, not saying you should have done this, because if you read like that Airport Zoning Regulations, it's. Have you read it?
Yeah.
Are we from, are we in compliance?
Uh I don't know.
Okay.
There's a mu- there's, there's a couple of things that are going on at the airport, the R M owns it. Uh but then there is a land use plan that's been regulated by the federal parties. And then there's a secondary plan and a development plan by Red River, and then there's a zoning by law for the R M. Uh so we sent it to the airport authority to give us the comments and of course they gave. Uh the regulation, the federal regulations, but at the same time, it's the R M, R M owns it.
Yeah, it'd be nice to read the the, their um. Their comments like from highways or agricultural, you know, we have no concerns. It'd be nice to read those comments rather than trying to, trying to read that.
Yeah.
You know, so. You know, so.
Yeah, and again, I, I don't know how you would enforce like a federal land use, um, where you already have a zoning bylaw. And a development plan as well. Uh, in the past, we, we should permit based on this zoning bylaw and this zone for all the uses that are going on.
Well, most federal, I think, bylaws are for airports supersede any provincial.
Yes.
So, as hands down, they have no authority provincial.
Right.
So, in it because of aviation keeping standard across Canada.
Yeah, and then I guess that's something that the RM administration here for the authorities can.
No, I'm just looking for, like, you said every other organization, like every other department and.
Right.
And they reply about no comment, no comment, and, you know, one was oils and mines and natural resources, like.
And those are all standard commenting agencies, it's like every application goes for them.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? The next item is.
Do you want me to? Okay, are we on here? Good, okay. Good evening, council, Madam Mayor, thank you Santan for the presentation. I'm certain we're all well aware of the List Road Recreation Site, but I'd just like to provide. Some background information as to why it's been situated at one sixty List Road. Previous council, following public consultation in twenty eleven and an open house in twenty twelve, formally adopted the airport secondary plan. Which identify northeast section of St. Andrews Airport lands as suitable for parks, recreation and open spaces. Now upon subdivision completion, this area would be formally removed from the St. Andrews Airport operating area, which would further the need to adequately rezone. Uh, the property to that of parks and recreation and accurately reflect future use of the land. Now further to the airport secondary plan, uh, I'm not sure if you've seen on the map there, a forty meter buffer was included between the railway. And the recreational site to allow for future connectivity. Um, future connectivity to our ever-expanding trails network, which would also extend southwards. From the rec site down to Parkdale Road, P R twenty seven. At the same time, this would also act as a green buffer, separating the residential properties to the east and the recreational site to the west. The overall intent of the subdivision and rezoning is to establish a large and expansive recreational area to encourage our community. To maintain a healthy lifestyle while spending time outdoors, engaging in physical activity, providing beautiful social gathering plates, uh, spaces. And furthering, uh, creating a heightened sense of community throughout the municipality. Now at this time, we have acquired sufficient fill material, uh, to develop what I'll refer to as our catalyst of the area, being the first phase of development. Uh, in a partnership with the AK Soccer Academy, as it was identified through our expression of interest, released around this time last year. Uh, and also, as presented at our open house, it was held the December sixth of twenty twenty three. That first phase of development on the map there, the ten point four acres, uh, will comprise of an indoor soccer complex with two turf fields. Four outdoor fields. And RM Administration will be establishing a public advisory committee to determine public use times for these fields. And to ensure that our community has adequate access to the initial recreational offerings that are, uh, offered at the site. So to conclude, this subdivision and rezoning represents a significant milestone and a step towards realizing our vision for sustainable development. While providing our community with accessible recreational opportunities that will only continue to grow in the coming years. And I'd now welcome any questions or clarifications that council may have.
Oh, will you have any questions for our clients? Yes, you might, there, um.
Well, I wanted to go back a little bit on the, on the front side of the show. Some of this, and this may flow into the subdivision portion of it too, where they are. You know, throwing it out there, saying, hey, we wanna, we wanna traffic study. And, but what does that mean? This, I know there's a bunch of people on list. I've got Jorheim, I've got Youngs, I've got the other side of list, I've got Gisnowski. They're concerned that there's gonna be a substantial amount of traffic coming through, and rightly so. Because, uh, you know, it's gonna be a large establishment there. Um, and when, when this comes through and, and, and they say, hey, we just need to try to traffic study them, so. If this gets approved, the traffic study is done afterwards, but that could mean some detrimental effects to the highways, or that could be something. You know, if, if they're coming off two thirty, another turning lane, we're gonna have all that type of stuff, like, how do we navigate something like that?
Right, so as you've listed there, it's a condition of preliminary traffic forecast, I've been in discussion with AK already. To get some numbers on what early events look like, you know, tournaments and things like that, but over time, the area will grow and develop and. Of course, you know, upgrades to the infrastructure, namely the two highways that intersect will be required, one or the other. What that looks like immediately, I don't know, but we'll be in contact with highways regarding those accesses with these projected numbers to begin. Similar to the other application that I just saw, as it's accessed off of a highway at both ends. Uh, we'll have to work very closely with them to come to an agreement and understanding, at the same time, uh, at the airport lands, I've been working to. With adjacent landowners in the area at a traffic study in that area, very close to this. Uh, area at the same time, so I'd like all of that to be done cohesively, so we factor in not just recreational area, but the airport and the industrial aspect to the west as well.
Thank you.
I can also clarify, earlier we had talked about the archaeological assessment, that was just a preliminary assessment due to the natural swales. That were in the area, uh, for the airport, there's a few natural land drainage swales, and I, based on what I read from their comments. They wanted to do a little sweep of the area, not a full-blown in-depth assessment of the property, so also an initial condition.
So as far as that condition goes, like, it was mentioned, two huge piles of mud came to that property. And you know where it all come from?
Hmm.
From the sewer projects? From.
From a roadworks, yep.
From the sewer projects, roadworks, but that's all foreign, most of that material there is all foreign, foreign material.
Within the past twelve years, I would say, yeah.
They're really gonna go down that far, so to me, it's.
They may not even, like, from what I understand, they may not even be too concerned with that specific area, more so, there's a natural swell slightly to the west of the area that's been built up. On the map there, slightly just west of the green property line of the ten point four acres as well, there are a few more running westerly that would. To be, of course, rectified through a drainage plan when we get to that point.
Yeah, but what's that have to do with archaeological?
I, heritage, uh, yeah, with proximity to the Red River. Yeah, yeah, up to council, of course.
I know, thank you, yeah.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, Kevin said your. Um, in opposition, would you like to speak to the matter?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor and Counselor, thank you for this opportunity. I had come here with the intention of slamming a lot of people for a lot of things, and. Well, I'm, I'm not going to have to as nearly as much anymore, because, uh. A deputy mayor sent an email to one of my neighbors that I only became aware of this after. Um, providing a link to the M O U that you were all part of. That answered most of the questions and concerns that I had, not all of them, I'll cover some of the other ones here still, but, um, so. I guess first, I'd like to comment that, as a citizen that's a neighbor to that area, I would, I would love to have. Been made aware of these links on the. Website for the, for the municipality, i- it would have solved a lot of problems and caused, uh, a lot less problems. I don't know if you're all aware, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Uh, one of the reasons I came here is because I was the recipient of a lot of misinformation. That was cleared up as a result of having read that M O U. Um, if you can do anything to add links when you're going to do something like this, a major development. Uh, to the R R P D application notification in the, in the news. That directs us to that information on your website, it would be greatly beneficial, um, rather than.
That's all on the RM website.
It is.
Like when we.
Yep.
When even when it was discussed in the meeting, it was immediately advertised on the RM website.
I didn't, I, I am a recipient of the connected thing that you ha- have set up, I've never seen anything on. The connected that led me to any of this information. I actually went on to your website and tried to search to find the application that the R R P D had advertised. To get additional information, it was, it, I, I could get nothing. I couldn't independently find the link that the deputy mayor sent to my neighbor. Until I found that link that was sent in the email, it was difficult to come across this information. So, would have solved a lot of problems, um. The R R P D app is terrible, the one that was advertised shows in the lightest shade. The northern portion of what we're here talking about today. What I do see is the huge portion of almost all of the airport property in a dotted line. Which indicated to me that this application had something to do with rezoning the entire airport. Other than the portion that was the old racetrack, the race failed racetrack, the old unused airport runway. And the portion that is being used as active runway. From this map, to me, it appears everything is, is going to be discussed as, as being rezoned. Um, R R P D did a terrible job at this. We've got color, we've got links, why couldn't this have been done better so that it was really clear about what this. This rezoning was about, would have solved some issues as well, um, so. I, I'm, I'm going to address some of the concerns that I, I did have and answer them at the same time, because, uh. Originally, I was critical of the fact that there had been no. R F P, R F Q put out to the general public to find out if anybody else was interested in all this. The M O U cleared that up, apparently, there were R F Ps put out for interest in development of this property. Most people, they're, realize that, I was under the impression it was a sole source op- opportunity that was given to AK. From what I've learned since, that's not the case, that people were given this opportunity, AK was chosen as one of the best options. That's really good to know, I'm happy about that. Um, the, the transparency issue was, was part of it as well, um. I was under the impression, and some of the misinformation out there says that, uh, this, all of the discussions in regards to this. Were similar to the previous airport fiasco that I was intimately involved with. Where nothing was shared with the public, me in particular and all of my neighbors, it was all done in camera. And I assumed, having heard the misinformation, that this was done in the same fact, that that was the case. I've since been told that all of your meetings were done, not in camera, but in, in public, in regards to this, this. Proposal, so. If you address this in misinformation, I think you could, you could. Prevent a lot of these issues and people like me having to come here and, 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 uh, be angry for nothing, because. A lot of the air was taken out of my sails when I talked to the deputy mayor, um. There is still a problem in my mind in regards to, uh, the, the reference to the development plans, Brayton, I believe, and. And the R R P D here, um, are still referring to some ancient documents. I, I think they should, and, and councils should be embarrassed, that we're referring to documents that were created back in twenty ten, fourteen years ago. And have been updated, uh, the latest one for the. Development plan was in twenty seventeen, that alone is eight years old. The St. Andrews Airport Secondary Plan that they're referring to, and that there are pictures of and images of. Was created in twenty twelve, twelve years ago, and has never been updated.
Yeah, why could stop you there?
Sure.
We're in the process and trying to, some of this is, is, development plan that, R R P D, this new council. Things have been done here for years, we are trying to update absolutely everything, we understand.
Great to hear.
It's years old.
Okay.
So if you wouldn't mind, in light of the time, if you could get to the, um, your point of concern, maybe.
Sure, I'll try to go through my pages here, um. Okay. One important question that I think needs, should be answered, needs to be answered, um. The St. Andrews Airport Inc. Board's opinion of the St. Andrews zoning bylaw. Last I was told, uh, was that they don't believe, they, they're of the firm opinion and belief that they are not governed. By the St. Andrews zoning bylaw at all, and operate independently of both St. Andrews zoning and the District Planning Area Board. Uh, this, to my knowledge, has never been solved, uh, directed to them. They were, the R R P D here was just talking about that, about the, the. Questions regarding who has authority over this. Don't you think that this should be solved once and for all before development takes place on that property?
Right, then that was always put aside for recreational lands.
Still zoned, though.
But that's why we're here, for rezon.
Yeah. Okay, here's our, here are some of the questions that I still do have. Um, has a new recreation master plan been developed? My understanding is that the existing one still refers to development of a multi-use community-based recreation facility on this property. What's happened to that plan and why have we not been advised if these plans have been abandoned? We're still held to that original plan until that changes.
No, it was just recently, we approved the master rec plan and the trails plan, what's that, August?
Is there a new one available to the public that we can access?
In the last year, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, August of twenty twenty three.
I, I've been online again, I've got old versions saved and I couldn't find the new one, so if there is a new one, thank you, I will, I will. Try and get somebody to link it to me. Um, the water and sewer study, um, has it been completed for this proposed facility? It's indicated in the M O U as being a requirement, um, if not, why is the zoning hearing taking place before the study has been done? And if so, why, if it has been done, why haven't we seen it? It's part of the M O U, it's a requirement.
We're, we're asking them to look up to wastewater.
Okay, that was a question of mine, and I think in the M O U it said that we were going to. Require a study to determine its effect on our wastewater system. That it's, does it say in there that they are going to be required to connect to the municipal system?
Determine when somebody builds something, how many equivalent residential units they will use.
Okay.
So that's what we're, we're waiting for.
And the line doesn't go under the tracks right now, the municipality, we are going to push it to their location?
They would.
Oh, they're, oh, but they will be responsible to do that, okay, thank you. Um, so, that answered the sewage portion, but how about the water? What has been done as far as a water test, there. We don't, I, I don't know what daily, weekly, monthly or annual usage projections are for this facility. But it's gonna be hundreds of people at, at, at a time, um, are they going to be on a well?
There's no potable water in the area.
Well, of course there is, I'm, I'm across the tracks and I'm drinking that water.
Drinking potable water from the water plant?
What are you referring to as, I, I'm talking about well water.
That's, that's treated, that's treated, right, treated in a water plant, et cetera.
Sorry, no, I'm, I'm talking about the potable water coming from my well, the well, the aquifer is potable there. So are they going to connect to our aquifer, the aquifer in the area? And so, has a drawdown test, has, has a use test being done?
They have to put in applications for that.
And.
Conservation will have to approve them having wells still out there.
Okay, so what, I, I'm, I'm not familiar with what the process is, if, if they haven't done this yet. And it shows that the use of their, their use of the aquifer. Could potentially cause a problem for the residences in that area, what then happens to the development?
Then probably would move forward, they can't get water.
Okay. Good enough, and if their use of the aquifer. Does cause problems to residential wells in the area after they have started operation. Has, has, or is there anything in the development plan that would cause them to have to remediate?
Uh, the planner might wanna confirm this, but they have to get approval from the province.
Yeah, so all the permits would come in after, uh, this is just a rezoning.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't do all these things before, before.
Okay, I thought you would have to do it before you were approved for it.
Why would they, why would they pay for all these studies and then, then they, then they don't get zoned?
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of the chicken and the egg scenario.
Right, yeah, and that's what, that's what, one of my concerns was, that it seemed like we were putting the cart before the horse with. The zoning bylaw taking place before all of these. the zoning bylaw taking place before all of these tests and and studies have been done. That's not the way it occurs, okay? Um, but if they don't pass any of these things, then the the zoning application is simply denied, okay?
Well, I I I would know about.
Like the rezoning would be.
Yeah, the rezoning said, we we want this, uh, uh, when I came to Saint Andrews, this was defined as, you know, recreational lands, so the zoning would move forward and it would be a zone for recreation, right? But then it might be another project, it might be a another partnership with someone, it might be just the RM itself, but the projects are expensive, right? And that's why you you partner with, you know, private corporations, certain levels of government.
Definitely, thanks. Um, one of the things in their planning documents is that they're planning on irrigating. That's gonna be a huge water usage and we, nobody in our area irrigates lawns, um, trying to save our aquifer and not overuse it. And they're planning on having uh, an industrial-sized facility where they're going to be watering the soccer pitches, I'm guessing. Um, again, is is that going to be taken into account when they do this water study? And can they hold that irrigation cannot or should not be um, used on this facility?
I I don't know what the the water supply is there for the aquifer, but in, it's quite healthy in in most of the uh, uh, most of the other regions like towards uh, uh, Rockwood and Rochester and West Saint Paul, parts of Saint Andrews, we've done water studies, uh, you know, to look at doing a, uh, you know, putting potable, when I see potable water, creating a water plant in in Saint Andrews. So uh, I I think it's plentiful, but conservation will have to approve it. And and, you know, the engineers there and and the environmentalists and 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 those type of things, so uh, you know, they, they may be using water for irrigation, but they won't be using water for, uh, you know, washing dishes as much or maybe showers as much as, you know, you won't be doing all the things you do in a home, uh, in a business like that.
It's a sports facility, they're gonna be showering, there's gonna be washrooms used, there's gonna be an irrigation on the, on the, it's gonna be a lot of water, and that's my concern.
Yeah, and we'll find out how much it will be, right?
Uh, if, a- again, back to that question, if their activities do, are detrimental to the aquifer and some residences suddenly find their wells being dry, what happens at that point? Be, because we've never had any well issues to this point. If after they go into business and this occurs, then what what occurs, what happens?
Well, if it's grouped by the province, there's nothing we can do after.
Really?
Really.
Why would anybody approve some potential project that had the potential of removing my water access?
Province would have scientific data to work with, they would have data at work. And that's how they would make their decision. They wouldn't, they wouldn't make it on hearsay or or as you say, you know, all you've heard is all this uh, bad information out there. And, you know, we've, we've had an open house on this, there is hundreds of people came to the open house. It was advertising the self record. Uh, there's been a number of opportunities to find out information, right? Like fact-finding information. And 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 that's the kind of thing that would go on here. There's, uh, the province has a, you know, a whole department with probably ten, fifteen, twenty, a hundred times uh, the amount of person power that we have here, and that's what they do for a living. They, you know, they have, uh, people that's in their departments that for the living, do for a living, will undertake water studies, uh, water usage all over the province, all the time that they have to look at on broadbacks, right? So they know how to do that, they, you know, they they have people with the experience way more than than we do here. So that would be up to the province and if, you know, if there's any doubt cast, then, you know, uh, the province shouldn't let it move ahead.
Okay.
That's, that's the best I could say, and and if they do that, you shouldn't have a water supply problem.
I hate shouldn't. The, the, one of the other notices, one of the other mentions in their plans is the use of outdoor lighting. Do you know what kind of lighting they're planning on? Do you know which fields they're planning on putting the lighting on? Um, what kind of restrictions are there going to be?
There's going to be restrictions on the lighting and 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 uh, it's, it's not like the the old days, I'll call it, right? There's, uh, lighting's changed in the past and one of the the senior members on their board has actually, uh, sells lighting across Canada for these kind of facilities. So when we had the open house, they had a, a board on lighting, right? And and how it would be addressed and and uh, it it shouldn't. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an issue for uh, for surrounding residents. I don't know.
Yeah, the airport has a condition that lighting requirements too for their overhead.
Okay.
So there's certain cupcaps that need to go on top to eliminate overhead lighting for planes as well, so, yeah.
But you were all part of seeing the great light show that we had just a few days ago. I wouldn't want to have that affected by having a bunch of lights in my backyard, I'm just over the fence from them, um, you know, twenty-four seven. Um, I don't know what they're talking about for restrictions or timing, that hasn't been provided. So I I know in the city, they have games running till midnight. That's an awful late time for them to be having lights if they're planning that um, at this location. I was wondering if you had any answers for that, but one more thing to keep in mind, um, that people will have objections to if if it's uh, if it causes problems for what we can see. Um. Why only a hundred dollars a year? For the fee that we're charging them if this is supposed to be a great benefit to us as a municipality?
Well, the the alternative is to my heels.
No, the alternative is to find somebody or to to charge them a reasonable fee, I guess, first of all, to this group or to find a different person who is interested in actually paying a reasonable amount for what they're getting from us.
We put out an expression for interests and and we didn't have a lot of uh, interest. It's been my heels for uh, for a few years. And the uh, uh, the will of the residents to see an increase in taxes, uh, demand for increasing taxes isn't there, so uh, in most places you'll see, and you know, in the capital region, if you don't partner up, it's not going to happen, so uh, if if they're gonna build a facility that's uh, uh, you know, worth four or five million dollars and uh, provide services for for Saint Andrews, brings people into Saint Andrews, uh, makes, you know, maybe it's the uh, the starting point for great things to happen for recreation in Saint Andrews. That's the kind of thing that you're trying to do here, you're trying to get a start. So so what are they bringing? They're bringing capital. And uh, you know, the the lease will terminate eventually, right? I I I don't know what the, what's the lease term, twenty-one years?
That's what we've been discussing, yeah.
And 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 uh, you know, so we have our lawyers looking at it and they build in all kind of uh, you know, silver bullets and and life programs, right? To do it, right? How do you bring capital into Saint Andrews and how do you kickstart things? Uh, this is one of the ways you do it, you you partner up. So so we knew that, right? We said, okay, we're not gonna sole source and and someone's gonna get up their uh, jacket one day and ask, you know, why are we doing this and why are we charging? And our answer is gonna be is 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 we're trying to develop something, we went out there, we looked for interest, right? And and council, all seven of the council indicated to the administration that, you know, can we, can we move forward with on this, on this idea and investigate it? I've personally done other triple P private, you know, public partnerships, right? And and there's on a lot of, you know, a lot of, a lot of people knocking on our door. We're just far enough from the city of Winnipeg, so they're not knocking on our door here. Uh, but when you get an opportunity, you you do it, uh, if if your council's willing. And then what that tells other groups, other private sector groups, right? There's a lot of private sector uh, money in in Saint Andrews is we're open for business. If you have a good idea and you can partner and there will be some kind of benefit for the RM and for the residents, we're interested.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you. Um, just one last comment on that's also been addressed by Deputy Mayor here in regards to the traffic. Um, I've heard from numerous people in the area that are concerned about how much traffic is going to be turning off of Main Street from that side and then possibly also from the McPhillips side. And we're wondering whether the municipality would be looking at expanding the size of that road, whether they would be asphalting it all the way down from the other side of the tracks to McPhillips and whether lights would be installed at either of those intersections. Also, along with that, nobody here yet has mentioned the MIT long-term plan for the Selkirk Corridor that is on the long-term developmental plan and the secondary plan for the for the airport. Has has that been dropped, do you know? Has anybody looked into that and what kind of effect it might have?
This is for the rezon.
Okay.
That's all coming, like that all, and we've all, well, especially Deputy Mayor Dornbar, myself, I don't know, other, probably other huge concern is the amount of traffic.
Right, okay.
And we're gonna seriously look at this, while we have to deal with MIT too, right?
Right.
And see how we can address this.
Okay. Great, thanks guys, that's all I have.
Council, I assure you, is open, lots of communication, it's nothing, no in-camera, everything's on the open.
Thank you, I appreciate that more than you understand.
Yeah, I'll, kind of, I just want to correct you, you said that there is no in-camera discussions happening. Of course, there's in-camera discussions happening when you do negotiations, so I just wanted to have a correction on that.
Okay.
Just in case you thought that everything was in the open, well, when you're doing negotiations with the partners, you can't have, you can't have that out in the public until you determine what you want to do and then those things come out afterwards, such as the MOU and the the link that I gave, uh, your neighbor.
Right, thank you, yep, um. I was just, uh, involved in two years of silence uh, in regards to that last airport fiasco. I never want to have to go through that again. It was ridiculous.
Not with this council, that has completely.
Thank you, Pubs, appreciate it.
Sarah, would you, are you like to speak or you're here for her husband's form?
Uh, just a couple of, just a couple of add-ons, promise not to, not to Cisarowskis with that much time tonight. We'll be here till midnight. Uh, just a couple of things sort of as an add-on when we talk about the timeline. And I understand that this is the rezoning and and it, the rezoning happens first and then everything else will happen afterwards in terms of the permitting and the licensing. My concern is that, that's what we say, the mud piles disappeared last summer before the MOU was signed. The MOU was signed and then there was an information meeting held because this MOU was signed in October and the public information meetings were December. So the timeline, it's really easy to get it skewed. And now we're going to have it rezoned and then we're going to have all the studies, you're gonna have the water study and the sewer study and you're gonna look at lights and traffic and all those plans. But they're building outdoor soccer fields this summer. That's what they, that's what the AK information says. So they're not waiting, if they're building outdoor fields this summer, they're going in with irrigation before there's been a water study. I would just like to have that brought to your attention, that those are the things that are concerning to us. It's those kinds of time cycles. We hear it from one side that we're going to be very careful and we're going to do it responsibly, but from the other side, it doesn't feel that way because the project is going forward before we've been given the information that those studies have taken place. The traffic study is the other huge one and I know everybody's concerned about that and they should be. I know what it's like to play soccer in the city, I did it for more years than I can would to remember in different leagues. Leagues fight for for time to play. It's a great source of income for AK to be able to rent that facility out when they're not using it and leagues will play through till midnight. And that's a lot of traffic, that's on this road, that's coming right by your house and it's gonna happen through till midnight, especially in the summertime, it will happen if there's lights on those fields. And in the wintertime, it will happen because indoor soccer space is at a premium. I used to play at midnight, know what that's like. I played at midnight in the summertime under the lights, I played at midnight in the wintertime. So I think that that's the kind of things that people are concerned about and those traffic studies need to show it, that's a lot of cars. And a indoor game is an hour long, that's every hour, you're probably looking at fifty cars coming and going. There's only two ways to get out of that facility. It's a lot of traffic. Outdoor soccer, it only stretches the timeline a little bit more, but twice the size of the teams, lots of traffic. That's it, thanks for your time.
Adam Prasnik, you're in opposition, you'd like to speak, please? Do you have anything new to add?
Um, good evening, Council, I won't take too much time, Madam Mayor. Um, so my name's Adam Prasnik, I'm the volunteer director. Contrary to some misinformation that has been spread by members of council, uh, Saint Andrews Soccer Association is not a business of mine and I receive no money from it. Just wanted to make that very clear, as I heard that at the open house. Um, so the reason I'm here is that I have many concerns about this project. This is unfortunately the first chance I've had to speak at a council meeting. As was mentioned, most of it was, uh, we got to the open house with everything having been in camera. And so the first reading was the actual first mention of this in a meeting and today we were the second. Um, so I'm in opposition because I think we should sell the entire property. Uh, this, this uh, property was purchased for the uh, for the purposes of public recreation. Uh, as Brayden mentioned, our goal is always public, uh, accessible, affordable recreation for all providing record opportunities as we can, so we have a vibrant, healthy, active community. Um, this property is worth jet, uh, there's been no assessment done, I've uh, requested that several times, but none has been brought to me. But given the air, how the airport values their land, this chunk of land that we're giving away is worth two point six million dollars. The whole property is worth fifteen. It's worth more than general, because of its industrial zoning, it's worth more than general farmland. It's also at the edge of the RM. And so we'd be better off to sell the entire property and uh, buy a piece of farmland more central so that people from Ward four, five, six have more access to it. Uh, the difference between purchase, the sale price and the purchase price of that of this property and the new property would net a several million dollars that we could multiply with grants to get a field off the ground for public recreation, a whole park going in the next five years. Currently, there's a Wildlife Duxson Limited Grant for five million dollars that requires zero contribution from the municipality. They would provide a retention pond, parking lot, trails and lighting uh, with the difference that we could net off the sale of the property. Those grants, we could have a new park done in five years. So the idea of giving away this parcel, yeah, well, even a chunk of this reduces the possibility of leveraging this property to the max for grants, for public recreation. Uh, it was brought up several times that this would provide new recreation opportunities for kids in Saint Andrews. As of the open house last year, the AK serves thirty-three children from Saint Andrews. I know personally, uh, they've lost numbers since because we took twelve back. Um, and we're up to three hundred and fifteen kids from the community. So in terms of subsidizing one group to the tune of two point six million dollars in property, uh, probably another million and a half to two million dollars to upgrade the road. Um, to subsidize one group to four million dollars uh, is ludicrous, a return on investment for thirty-three children. I was also brought up about raising tax revenue in the RM. Uh, one high estimate I heard was fifteen to twenty thousand dollars as new tax revenue this would bring in. If you consider the land value alone being assessed at two point six million dollars by the RM's own assessment, that would take a hundred and thirty years at zero percent interest to get a basic return on that, what we're giving away in land alone. It's an awful investment for the taxpayer. If this is to go forward, the RM needs to put in serious um, conditions that this be a permanent facility. Right now, it is uh, a tent facility with a lot lifespan of approximately fifteen to twenty years. I I'd be very skeptical they'd actually get that lifespan out of it in the airport zone. I know what their sign blew into about sixteen to eighteen pieces that they put up, they were solid plywood. It's a very windy area and in the past, there was a tent building at the airport that was used uh, for uh, running airships up north with cargo, it lasted less than two years. So it's something to fact during. So the bill, if the arm is to approve this, they need to make sure that this is a permanent facility. Because there is a strong likelihood the RM will end up owning this at some point. The uh, the business proposal put forward at the open house shows that this company is really stretching to make this project happen as is. They can't afford to buy the land.
Point of order. This is nothing to do with rezoning.
Do you have something to discuss about the rezoning?
Uh, well, as I mentioned before, I don't think it should go ahead because I think we need to consider all options, including selling the entire property.
All of this you mentioned, we've all heard at the open house, you were at the open house, this is all repetition. This is an application to resume some of the power.
Agreed. And I, again, this is only the second chance. It is anyone in the community has had to address this whole project. This might not be the right um, format for it, but again, it's it's the only chance we've had.
This is for a zoning bylaw. So do you have anything to add about the zoning? You understand your concerns. You were at the open house. I personally don't speak to five hundred and sixty other councilmen, but you were raising concerns there.
Yeah. Absolutely, but that was not a public forum of a meeting. And so I'd like this on record.
Well, that was a problem. That was a public meeting.
Uh, it wasn't.
Anything else to add about the result?
Um, just this whole project is awful and it needs to be reconsidered from the start. We could get the park we need for community access going if we look at other options. But this seems to be the route that was chosen right from the start, so it is what it is, I guess.
Well, it's in the rec master plan. That's what we approved when you said yourself.
So direct master plan, yeah.
Recreation land that result.
So I've been council over twenty years and when I got on council in two thousand and two, we're looking for rec land then.
Yep.
So, and it's impossible to find. It's impossible to find land that you can grow into in fifty, sixty, a hundred years. We have that land there to be able to grow into it. We can take up another hundred acres if if we need from that land. So at council at that time, looked and looked and looked and looked and looked. And then whenever you did find a piece of land that was restricted to its twenty, thirty, fifty, sixty, seventy acres, price was ten fifteen thousand dollars and an acre. Price of that land, two thousand dollars an acre that we give to ourselves for operating the air, for operating the airport.
Yep.
I don't know where your one point two million is on land assessment. Again, with the operating agreement from the federal government and the RM, they're not allowed to sell that land to an individual. So we can't sell it then. It's RM land. It's in the agreement that was done in nineteen ninety seven or nineteen ninety-eight when the airport was turned over from the federal government.
So they maybe look at a similar development model where you have at the airport currently where you rent out the land that's owned by the. Yeah, no, but there's different ways of doing this and that would be.
We spend another twenty years in doing that and we have nothing, so.
Well, the RM is right now has a blank canvas, but that blank canvas could be at any different site and it could be a more central location that would serve the better.
Anything else to add about the result?
Uh, no, I'm good. We'll end it. Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, any for the questions on this? Okay. We are finished here with the public hearings. I've called on anybody. Yeah, I've called on them. Um, be resolved that the council hereby closes public hearings for May fourteenth at seven oh seven PM. Can I have a mover, please? Uh, Counselor Mondar, Seconder, Deputy Dr. Voss, all favor. Hey. Now we'll have resolution for decisions. Resolution for decision number conditional use number eight dash two oh two four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll four four three four hundred has made application for conditional use eight dash two oh two four for the premises described as eight four five six PTH number nine highway. Now there, the purpose is to allow rental space with the liquor permit auction on the subject property in or a suburban residential zone. Now there was, Counselor, I believe you were gonna have uh, some changes on here.
Yeah, so I'll read the resolution, but like, I guess if, I don't like the word may or or shall in there. I think we have to allow them to operate as they are. We're not changing the use of it. And I believe there was a, you know, the paperwork has been lost of the occupancy permit. Um, which planner had made said there's a good chat, but so this is a small church. We all know what size it is and at and to allow them to to have a glass of wine rather than a cup of coffee, I think, is. So I think if it comes back from the liquor, from um, Manitoba Liquor Lotteries that whatever they need from us in signing whatever, or the CAO, I think we allow that to happen. And what else was the conditions on here? Yeah, a parish hall, not a, not a community hall. Like the conditional use is already going forward, so.
Not a banquet hall, it's a parish hall.
And that was kind of the discrepancy why it's a conditional use is required for it, which which I feel it shouldn't have been in the first place, but we're here, we we deal with it, so. Um, did number six, the business license come out of there? And number two, applicant owner obtained all building permits from from Red River Planning and then with the, maybe uh, if required from MLCC? Yeah, if only if required from MLCC.
Now, may I suggest on number one, this approval is limited to rental space um, in the parish hall with little permit.
Sure. Did we get a second?
Oh, we're making changes. Okay. Okay, so number one will be, therefore with the result, would, if somebody else have any changes? Be resolved. Number one, this approval is limited to rental space in the parish hall. With liquor permit as proposed in this application, any change in use may require a new conditional use approved. Will you add in there?
Yeah, that's, because they're not gonna change the use of it. That's a standard clause.
Just a quick comment, parish hall isn't really defined as a zoning. Now zoning bylaw just defines a banquet hall and a.
It was a, no, it was in the uh.
The applicant made that comment of.
No, it was typed in our type package. You had the definition under the zoning bylaw of a banquet.
Of a banquet hall.
Ah, okay.
Parish hall, the tone exists, but it's not in the zoning bylaw.
It would fall under the definition of a religious facility. That's a different use from what's being proposed for the conditional use, being a banquet hall.
That was the closest we could find.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be a bank at all. That's why it was used is not listed. Because it doesn't really fall under any specific category.
Then the approval is limited to rental space in the parish hall, I take that out?
You can just say whatever they were proposing, so the approval is limited to a rental space uh, with a liquor permit I proposed in this application.
Okay, that's it. Okay, that was number one. Number two, applicant owner obtains all the required permits from Red River Planning and the RM of St. Andrews is required from MLCC.
I think so. Would you, Braden?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, the local parking must remain on the subject property or within the following permitted areas as per the submitted site plan. Uh, number four, dedicated shoulder parking along the north side of Planton Boy Road directly adjacent to the subject property. All signage shall be in compliance with section three point two eight signage of the RM of St. Andrews zoning bylaw four oh six six. Use of the property must adhere to the RM of St. Andrews North by lot number three six two six. And remove the last condition that says applicant owner to obtain a business license. Annual business license from the RM. Are the mover and Seconder okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so all in favor? Very, it's been approved. Um, conditional use number twelve dash two oh two four. Resolution for decision, whereas the applicant owner of tax roll four hundred eight hundred has made application for the premises described as one one nine seven two twelve oh one Breezy Point Road. Purpose is to allow for the operation of a kennel on the subject property. All the conditions were listed um, by the planner and on the screen, there's fourteen. And was pointed out, number eight, the number of dogs over the age of four months shall not exceed the maximum of ten. Was there comment?
I've got, uh, I I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the the handle of what's going on in this property, first and foremost, before we start adding a ten dogs or maximum of ten dogs in here. He's got fifty dogs that are sitting there right now and he needs to sell them uh, somehow and uh, kind of move along a little bit. Um, I'd like to see that number reduced significantly if possible, but give him the formal timeline to figure out what uh, he needs to do in the next couple of months to get rid of some of these animals.
Counselor Snicker?
I one hundred percent agree. I don't want to see this amount of shuffle, although I understand what everyone in the area is saying. I agree with Counselor Dornbar, we need to give him a firm timeframe.
Make a suggestion?
Uh, I would say six months. They're talking about fifty dogs.
So that's a condition that has something that we need.
For the grand total of everything, yeah.
Well, what are you proposing? On the list of conditions?
We have to have it in.
You could write it in number eight, add it to number eight.
And then, uh, Counselor Dornbar said that if you think ten dogs in actual kennels is too much, then you can break that down, but.
Yeah, I've thought about this. I would say, you know, he's got a stud and uh, two females and whatever he's got in his house. I think that was three or six dogs. Uh, six dogs would be plenty to start and and hopefully, uh, you know, get rid of those, not get rid of them, but sell those fifty animals he's got on on site right now because that's significant. I thought it was fifteen, but when he said fifty, I was very surprised. So, um, again, these things can get away on you, right? So I understand. And uh, just maybe give the applicant some time to to get a handle on it and four months would be fine unless someone else has a different timeframe in mind.
Uh, I mean, uh, Counselor, if you're.
Yeah, I would think six months is.
So that will have to be added in here as a condition.
Do I make a request?
Okay, you have fifty dogs right now on the property. How long is it? How many are you intending to keep?
Uh, right now, and for breeding, three pairs.
So you want to keep six dogs, so you've got forty-four that have to live in the proper.
Yeah, I have thirty-some dogs that are my pups. I have a couple of rescues.
No, but.
But yeah, I.
You want to keep six dogs total, yeah.
I do wanna wanna breed them for the next couple of years.
You want six dogs?
Six dogs.
So you've got forty-four to get rid of, darn not get rid of, but you know, I'm sorry, you need to remove forty-four from your property.
Yep.
I'm not, I'm thrilled, I'm someone who needs to sell a dog. How long would this normally take?
Well, I, I think, Counselor, I think we're all kind of saying a six-month period is satisfactory. There is now, do we need to take that into account where we move it? Where you still have to move it to get outside the property for the neighbors?
Yeah, I think six months is too long. I think, you know, it's uh, and also uh, what was the conditional, uh, number eleven was a biannual review. You know, it should be done through bylaw and 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 upheld because it's gonna be a concern to the neighbors.
Uh, my concern is the neighbors.
You probably reviewed, yeah. And I think even three months is long enough to get rid of the dogs. They've already been twenty-two months there.
Counselor Snicker?
Um, I did talk a little bit to bylaw about this and they are very much on top of it and plan to stay on top of it. So that is something that's already been going on, that's why we needed to keep the dogs. But yeah, I don't think bylaw is going to back away from it, but we this gentleman now needs to stop and do something with these dogs.
Okay, so we're adding in a condition, number eight. Okay, we're working on condition number eight. The number of dogs over the age of four months shall not exceed the maximum of ten. So who wanted that changed? Somebody wanted that.
I didn't want it changed.
Two?
The six.
The six months?
Six dogs.
The number of dogs over the age of four months.
He's got his dogs and he's got the ones that are in his house and he's got the puppies that are under four months. Months, I mean, they would be under sixteen weeks, so.
I've got three, three puppies for sale under six months.
See, all these numbers and names are throwing me completely off. Breeding, selling, keeping.
Sales, sales are in the spring and in the fall, summertime is pretty slow.
Well, then I think that.
Okay, Council, give me some suggestions here on which conditions you want and what you want changed. Yes.
Sorry, uh, I added a condition number eight, so the number of dogs over four months shall not exceed a maximum of ten and then reduce to a maximum of six dogs in the next six months ending November twenty twenty-four. And then you can add another condition, the total number of dogs. Uh, the overall total number of dogs should not exceed, including puppies, should not exceed the number with whatever council decides.
Some some quarterly inspections.
Well, the gentleman, the applicant indicated he's only wants to have the six.
In total?
Six breeding.
Six breeding, but then.
But then how many other dogs you gonna have?
Two whites, neither one is breeding. I've got one white. That's a runt. And I've got, oh, wait, a palmarium.
Four more and six.
These are all house dogs.
It doesn't matter, we're the the number of dogs on the property, overall, that's what we're. I don't, I don't, we don't need to hear if they're breeders, if they're house dogs, or the number of dogs.
Yeah, bylaw, bylaw officer advised me to get a kennel permit for ten. Six would be breeding. I'd have to get licenses for ones in the house.
Okay, that makes sense with, and Ted's, the number of overall dogs, including puppies and breeders, limited to ten at all times.
Following the six month.
Following the six month that we give her four months, whatever you want to do here to help get rid of all the forty-four other puppies that we have.
That makes sense.
Yeah, because you're gonna have a litter of many puppies. It's saying including puppies. Can I just make a suggestion?
What's new?
Um, number eight, the number of dogs over the age of four months shall not exceed a maximum of ten. All other dogs exceeding the maximum must be removed within six months ending whatever date.
Right, perfect. Can you do that then?
Makes sense sometimes.
Well, and let's get them moving, right?
But say that again, Lisa.
Um, maximum of ten, all dogs exceeding this maximum must be removed from the property by, whatever we say, four months, which would be what, end of August, June, July, August? Or September? September thirtieth?
Yeah, same by, because he said September thirtieth.
There also should be no more breeding until he is thus come within compliance. So I don't know how you put that into a, there should be no more breeding until compliance has been met. Like, the bottom line is to find these dogs at home without having to euthanize them and remedy a bad situation that's got out of hand, obviously. So.
Yeah, I I I agree with what you're saying. He has to get a handle on this.
I guess, Chris, Chris is the bylaw. Great, well, I guess good, good to the bylaw.
So you want no more breeding till?
I'm just throwing it out there for discussion amongst council, this we can discuss it amongst us all, but not with the applicant.
In a bit the same situation all time.
But Lisa had a comment.
I I was just saying, if we put in a condition that there needs to be a review after September thirtieth for compliance. Um and if not, the the application will be.
We have that in condition eleven. Their biannual.
When there was another, then you. Have to change.
Biannual starting September thirtieth.
So you want annual or six months?
Six months. Well, right now, we've got changed that permission by September thirty, it should be removed by September thirtieth. So bylaw will have to go there August first. I guess September, October first. So then should number eleven change, applicant owner shall permit annual or and periodic inspections? Or if that is where things complied with, then.
What, did you have there sometimes read something again that? Okay, so number. Nine, the number of overall dogs, including puppies and.
Breeders.
Breeders, dogs.
Limited to ten.
Limited, but you can't have, if you're including puppies. You can't include the puppies, because then you're exceeding your limit. Well, if you have two breeders. Like, you can't include puppies in that, because within one litter, you're gonna exceed your maximum. And that was not the intent, it was puppies. Um.
The council.
Then you put a maximum loan of dogs on the property. Full? Including puppies?
Well, how do you know when puppies, I don't know, but I mean, you can't have. We can't ask them to to to.
No, it's a.
The 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 dogs was over four months, because puppies, you never know how many litters or. How many in a litter.
Yeah, okay.
See, now he said he's got fifty. The number of overall dog, we're limited to ten at all times, so he not requires today. Well, then, you're all whispering, no one's.
I agree.
Yes.
It's stating exactly what.
Yeah, so he's got to September thirtieth to get it all figured out.
Okay, everybody's through those conditions?
So, another note, we have, how much time do I always have to make a decision on this? We need any information, like counsel, bylaw, like a. Probably hearing, but I always remind council, we always have time to make these dec- decisions, so they're not rushed. I think the sooner we get this done.
Change all the conditions.
I know, yeah, move forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, could I have a mover on this, please? Counselor Snicker, your secondaire. Counselor Pivacor. All the conditions have been amended, everybody is good.
I just got one direction. Mister Planner talked about the dog, the dog licenses that applies to dogs that are over four months. It was kind of implied, I thought, that. When the dog's over four months, then you have to get a a a license for the mess per hour by law. That doesn't. Which is contradicts, that doesn't allow them to stay there just because they have a a a license, correct?
No, it still require a license, yes.
Yeah, I know that we require, but. It kind of sounded like though that if they get a license for them, then they can have more than ten. Because they have a license for them.
No, just that all adult dogs must.
I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, all in favor? Carrie. Just. This is a very confusing one.
Yeah.
Will someone be sending a a letter to the applicant confirming everything?
Yes, they've got a copy of it for us.
Oh. Thank you, there, it's been approved, sir.
Thank you. I just want, want the time to find a woman who's been shut down.
Good, okay, thank you very much. Resolute Chief for Decision Number, for Variation Order Number thirty-five two oh two four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll one-one-eight-five-zero has made application. For Variation Order Number thirty-five two oh two four. With the premises described as one-nine-two river rope. The purpose was to amend the main height, the three conditions were limited on the screen. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Donbod, secondaire. Counselor Mondor. Any for the comments, all in favor? Carrie. It's good to, thank you. Resolution for Decision for Variation Order Number thirty-six two oh two four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll four-hundred-one-hundred has made application. For Variation Order Number thirty-six two oh two four. With the premises described as eleven-thirty-three to eleven-forty-seven point rope. The purpose is to establish a tree nursery and greenhouse operation on the subject property. And the rest of the comments were all noted by planner as well as on the screen. Therefore, be resolved the Variation Order Number thirty-six two oh two four be hereby approved by council with the following conditions. One, that the variances be limited to increased width as proposed in this application. Any further changes will require new variance approval. Number two, that the applicant owner obtained all the required permits from Red River Cloning District and the RM St. Andrews. Oh, I'm proud, there was a third one that you were gonna move.
Well, I'll I'll move it with the removal of 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 condition number three.
Okay. Remember my copy that I printed out, that I just read the rest, it doesn't have condition three. On it. Remove number three, remove number three, and Counselor Snicker, seconded then? All in favor? Carrie. Resolution for Decision for Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number four-three-nine-four, second reading. Be resolved that council give second reading to zoning bylaw amendment four-three-nine-four, bring a bylaw to rezone a portion of the property located. At one-sixty less road as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Snicker, seconded by. Um. Counselor Maraki, great. Any further comments? All in favor? Carrie. Item number. I agenda item number four-point-one-two. Resolution for Decision for Zoning Bylaw four-three-nine-four, third reading. Be resolved that council give third reading to zoning bylaw amendment four-three-nine-four. Being a bylaw to rezone a portion of the property located at one-six-zero this road as presented, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Mondor, secondaire. Counselor Hunt, any comments, all in favor? Carrie. Number, maybe, because that was four-point-two. Four-point-three. My copy. Item, agenda item four-point-one-three, resolution for decision for subdivision S-twenty-four-three-oh-three-four. Be resolved that proposed subdivision number S-thirty-four-three-oh-four four by hereby approved by council with following conditions. And one is the, they were on the screen, but the one is to get the applicant owner provider written confirmation to Red River Cloning. For Manitoba transportation, that the preliminary traffic projections as requested. In their car correspond state of March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four have been addressed. Number two, the applicant owner provider written confirmation to RRPV. From the Archaeological Assessment Services Unit. Number three. Um applicant submits written confirmation to RRPV about Hyderow and the easement. Number four, applicant owner rezones. The proposed lots from the current AIP Airport Industrial Park. To PR Parks and Recs Ocean. And Recreation Zone, to accommodate the proposed recreational uses. Facilities asked proposed in zoning bylaw amendment number four-three-nine-four. Could I have a mover, please?
May I ask a question?
Uh well, we'll get a mover to put it on the table, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Snicker, secondaire. Counselor Maraki, any comments? Counselor Mondor.
Can we remove the number two, point number two?
Yes.
And number two, to remove the archaeological assessment?
I mean, if the council wants, yes, but I can't really comment because it's the provincial.
I would recommend that we keep all four in there, but if council wishes to remove item two, it's up to their discretion. Just to comply that it's our subdivision, comply with the province and their asks.
And I think we should.
But again, just for council's consideration, uh the province can appeal.
Mm-hmm.
If the condition, because they have a copy.
Okay.
Of whatever was it, so they do have the right.
Oh, thank you, Counselor Hunt.
So, I understand your comments about the drainage issues and the squalls, and that that'll be addressed in our engineered drainage plan.
For engineering of the dri- they'd like to do a sweep of it for archaeological and heritage purposes, given the proximity to the Red River.
I don't know.
I would entertain it and let them go and do their.
I understand, we've taken them out of other ones before, it's just that. There's, like I say, we've said there's dirt around that whole area that's been. Migrated in or or foreign from from that area. And it's just redundant of of to do that, I think, I can understand the drainage, but I don't know what interest they have in drainage.
Counselor Pivacor.
Yeah, I think if they have an interest in it, then we need to let them.
I agree with Brayden and I agree with you, because we're in our own file for this, the provincial. And we don't need to put forward, as the planner said, then have a appeal.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good leaving, as is? All in favor? Carrie. Will we close? Okay, thank you, everyone, that is, now we'll go into the regular portion of the meeting, but I would request five minutes. Reason. Thank you, everyone.
Recording stopped.
Over.
The.
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 Recording in progress.
We're back in the council meeting at seven forty-six P M. Adopted minutes. Be it resolved that council adopt the April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four council meeting. Deputy Mayor Dornbaugh, second there. Counselor Monter, any errors or omission during singing on our paper? Eric. Draft, May first, twenty-twenty-four, special council meeting. Be it resolved that council adopt the May first, twenty-twenty-four, special council meeting minutes. Twenty-four financial plan here and as presented. Could I remove her, please? Counselor people corn, second there. Counselor Moreki. Nathan Pines, all in favor? Very. Next item, we don't have reception of duck, delegations, our petitions, bylaws and policies. Twenty, financial plan adoption. Be it resolved that council adopt the twenty-twenty-four financial plan as presented. Now I'm asking for a move, Mary, second there to put it on the table and our C A O will be giving prescriptions. Deputy Mayor Dornbaugh, second there. Counselor Moreki. Thank you. Uh, Brent, could you please?
Yeah.
Do a presentation?
So we, we, we spent almost twelve hours in budget deliberations. We came with the financial plan for the first reading to council. There are some questions. Uh, we addressed some of the questions. We had a column one that for twenty-twenty-three that wasn't, uh, correct and and uh, the, the, the best I can, uh, say for what happened there is when you, when we did a copy that everything didn't copy over from our, our updated plan. So we corrected the twenty-twenty-three budget that now shows on the end of the actual, uh, twenty-twenty-three at nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar surplus. Uh, this is the finance plans updates from May fourteenth, so here's what we've changed. Over to the first slide, Tim. So the, the, uh, the municipal operating grant was eight hundred and ninety thousand. Yeah, you're gonna have to go back. Uh, eight hundred and ninety thousand and we tried, we, we called the number of, uh, provincial, uh, departments to ensure that we were getting a grant. We didn't get a letter or anything like that. Uh, phoned the minister's office, uh, nobody would, would confirm to us that we would be getting this money or what we would be getting. Uh, but I was able to talk with, uh, Nick Prowitz from A M M. And, uh, he felt that the money would most likely be coming and it would be at least what, uh, last year's, uh, amount was. So I, I've, uh, asked him to plug in last year's amount plus one percent. And we're hoping to get two percent. So if we do get two percent, then that would be, uh, money that we'll have on hand about, I believe it's about thirteen thousand dollars to to use in other areas of budget or to give us buffers. So we had an increase in revenue there of five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Now, when we were doing the budget, we came, we had, uh, we had a number of, uh, areas that we cut to keep the budget into a, a reasonable, uh, increase. And, uh, most of the, the cuts were in public works, so we reinstated the majority of the cuts that we made. So you'll see public works wages overtime from sixty to seventy-six, five hundred and increases sixteen thousand, five hundred. So last year we didn't have a lot of snow. Uh, there, there wasn't a lot of callouts for, for public works. The graders weren't on the road as much. We didn't have as many range problems as before, so we didn't use all our overtime money. And, and that's part of the contribution to why we had to service. Season, seasonal wages, we've increased by forty-nine thousand dollars. You can see the numbers there. Uh, Vault Diesel, three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, fifty thousand dollar increases. So I'm bringing the numbers back into what public works asked and back to, uh, uh, to previous budgets, right? To match up to them. Equipment and gas, uh, from eighty-five to ninety-eight thousand. So, uh, it's, it's, it's good to have your high amount there because you don't know what's going down and what the price is. Equipment maintenance, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a fifty thousand dollar increase. Uh, we have a number, uh, a number of pieces of equipment that we haven't been keeping up with, let's say, over the last four or five years. As a matter of fact, we have a big, uh, semi that we, we take, uh, we load up, uh, equipment on and move from the landfills. Isn't working right now. Uh, dust control, four hundred to four forty. Gravel, six hundred to six ninety. So listen, I've been hearing a lot of stuff from, uh, a lot of counselors about roads and we got to address roads. So I, I, I view this as an opportunity to, uh, be able to get that public works budget, uh, back into, uh, to high performing. And then we, we also took fifty thousand and we put it into machinery reserve, so we added fifty thousand to machinery reserve. So there you have a, you went to top, that's your top line. And the other lines are expenses that we increased. Next slide. And that takes our mill rate to ten point zero nine seven, which is a one point three one percent increase. So remember, we were at two point nine nine. Next slide, please. And those are just our numbers where, uh, twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four and the transportation services where we, I've brought those expenses back up. You could see it's still lower than our budget was in twenty-twenty-three. So nothing unreasonable there. And recreation is and cultural services is up. So there's all your numbers there. Uh, a lot of them are built in, uh, you know, there's wage increases, there's increases in utilities and those type of things. Uh, the only significant increase when we've made a change is in preparation, cultural services. But we discussed that, had a budget, we had twelve hours of budget meetings where we discussed all this. This is just us plugging it into, you know, this financial platform. So we're not doing anything different than we just discussed. Next slide, please. There's our capital projects. I don't believe anything has changed there. Uh, but there they are, so you could see them and you can be aware and, and if someone questions or puts in your mind, puts seated doubt in your mind and says, oh, there's something wrong here, you know, we don't even know what we're spending on. There you go. There's your capital projects for, for twenty-twenty-four. There's a lot going on in this community. Next slide. Mill rate, ten point zero nine seven. So, so we have a new mill, lower mill rate. There we are. There's that comparison slide again. So you can see I've changed that to ten point zero nine seven. The next slide. See how I did that turnaround thing because I knew to the, to PowerPoint? Let's see, it's flipping around again. Trying to go back. I did this all today, right? So I, I've also heard a question out there. Nobody tells us what your reserves are. We want to be quite transparent with our reserves. Just flip back, Tim. I don't, I don't know how, how that program in there for why. Uh, but there's a reserves and, and I'll hand this out later. Opening balance is, is on, on the left side, you could see, uh.
It's doing it by itself.
It's doing it by itself, yeah.
It's doing it by itself.
Okay.
I want to stop the teacher.
Okay, yeah, uh.
We'll just move on. You'll give us a fresh copy.
Let's see those little arrows on the bottom. Yeah, go there and go back. Maybe we'll stay back now. So you see machinery, your opening balance, you, you have your contribution.
Back to the middle of this way.
Yeah, please, thank you. I'm a C A O, not a PowerPoint guy. Okay, you guys can all see that, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, so machinery, there's your opening balance on, in twenty-twenty-four, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one eighty-five. Our contribution, so we've, we've either done this through the surplus or there is, uh, some interest will be your, your contribution, uh, in twenty-twenty-four and your number in twenty-twenty-four per machine row will be nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-two. But then we plan to use sev- seven hundred and sixty thousand this year. We've, we've decided to make some purchases and and we've done some stuff with administration, right, that we're able to put money in there. And the other major one I'll go to on this page is, is fire. Our starting balance in twenty-twenty-four and, and you'll see how, what we did with the surplus. We have one point five five six after a contribution in our budget and what we took out of our surplus. So we have one point five five six in fire. This is a bit of an issue for, for this council because we haven't had money for fire, so we've been working hard to, if we got a surplus, let's make sure that surplus goes towards, uh, you know, P W equipment and fire equipment. So one point five in there. Another hundred, five hundred and twelve thousand in contributions will bring us up to twenty-twenty-four, council people corn's gonna like this, two million dollars. And then we're gonna spend nine hundred and twenty-four thousand this year. So on, there's a, a, a thing going on in the north hall with a, a shower and that. They have no shower, right? And they're, they're fighting fires and they're, they're taking their, their, their uniforms that are, are contaminated home to wash. It's gonna be doing that there and there's some other cosmetic stuff going on and some other additions in that number. There's some, uh, there's some, uh, high-end firefighting gear and so we're going to use nine hundred and twenty-four thousand this year. We're going to buy some fire equipment. And we don't pay for it all this year because there's a two-year turnaround. We're, we're all, uh, aware of that and our ending balance will be one point one hundred and twenty-five. We'll plan to put more in. You see general dedication, gas tax. Your ending balance at the end of this year will be one point six in gas tax. The next slide. So this is, uh, this is the rest of the, the reserves. You could see where, you know, uh, uh, I've, I've heard, I've heard the seated doubt, uh, you know, the, the rumors that you hear out there that we don't have anything in reserves. It's not true. We have, I, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't give us an A plus on reserves, but I would give us a B. Uh, there's all our reserves. There you see the lagoon's gonna go down to not, almost nothing. But we'll be doing a utility spec that will pay the cost of a loan and put money into a, you know, start putting money to build the lagoon reserve backup and we'll have to cover operating expenses. In other, uh, in other excluded, uh, the, the emergency road fund, so we use fifty percent of our reserve for emergency road fund. Starting the year in twenty-twenty-four with eight point two in, a little less than two million in contributions uh, from the budget and, and interest brings us up to nine point, uh, five. It will be in total in twenty-twenty-four and we'll be using almost three point five. And at the end of the year will leave us under seven million dollars.
Counselor Hunt?
So, go back to the numbers. I don't know if I'll ask it or make a comment on it, but talked about the emergency road fund, which is like gravel. If we needed bad, bad spring or bad fall, fifty thousand went in from the surplus. We talked about when we did our budget of putting another hundred thousand in there by resolution at some point of the summer uh, for road upgrades from asphalt, asphalt buildings. And that would come out of the, out of the gas tax, which is what gas tax is meant for, for roads. So as long as we understand.
At, at the budget meetings, I had an informal agreement that I said I would bring a resolution back, but still a counselor, huh? It's, it'll be the will of council, I don't, so if you have your majority says we want to do that resolution, we will, so. Uh, yeah, I'm committed to be bringing that back as a resolution.
Thank you.
I don't, on, on this slides, I don't have the, uh, uh, what we did with the surplus, but you see I put a resolution in. If you looked at your agenda, right after we do this financial plan, I have a resolution. So we haven't been doing that at St. Andrews in the past. We haven't been, if we had a surplus, we haven't said where it's gonna go or, or you know. Uh, so our practice moving forward is going to be to do a resolution so people can see if we have a surplus where we put it. And this year we put the majority of it to reserves. The next slide. Just our important dates again. And, uh, that's it. So those are the changes we've made from the, uh, wait, there should be more. There should be. If you go down a bit, yeah. Yeah, here we go. That didn't come out this, I thought, okay, yeah, that's okay. So we had a question, uh, uh, from Mr. McKenzie. He wanted a breakdown of the amount of three point four seven five of page two. So there's your breakdown, admin office, fire, P W, Lockport Trail. Or that's a Lockport project, then the trail and then the utility. So that makes up that three, four, seven, five. And then, uh, go, that one coming up next to him is, that can't be read, so I put it on the next slide. Yeah, and then, uh, he also asked for a breakdown of the four, five, five, two of page five. So South St. Andrews, W W S, wastewater, two hundred thousand, admin equipment, twenty-five thousand. You've seen these numbers before. These aren't some kind of surprise for, for council. You've all seen these numbers. We've talked about them for twelve hours. Phone system, thirty thousand, buildings, thirty thousand. So that's admin buildings where we've got some maintenance things going on around us. Fire, all the halls, three hundred and forty-nine thousand. I've talked about fire. I showed you fire, uh, before. Fire trucks, five hundred and fifty thousand. We talked about that at budget. Fire rebrand, public works, equipment. You are all familiar with what we're going to be purchasing there and we're also doing some lease projects there. Then there's the Lockport project, the one point four eight zero. It's been talked about. We've had an open house about. We bragged about getting the grant. Uh, walking trail project, nine eighty-three, so that, this, this money that you're seeing here is including grants too. Uh, solid waste recycling, we're doing a fifty thousand dollar, uh, well, we've put, I don't know what the study's gonna cost. We're gonna have to enter it out and see if we'll do it, but we've put fifty thousand towards solid waste and recycling and I told you about that too. I want to see open houses in at least a couple of areas of the R M. Call the people, do surveys, uh, uh, do a, 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 a plan of, of what this would look like, a cost benefit study on if we did this, you know, uh, if you look at it just from, from, from the top, it's like, boy, we're spending a lot of money, but if you look at it on if, if we start doing recycling and garbage pickup or solid waste pickups in, uh, in most areas at homes, will, will that save us in the long term? What does that mean for the community at all? And, and then after that, you see a utility vehicle. This is the one uh, infrastructure director came and talked to you about and you all agreed to give him this one and then you. gave him the no way on another one. So all of these things you've seen, there's no there is nothing being hidden behind the scenes. There's there's nothing that doesn't add up and and all we've done is take took what we spent twelve hours talking about and put it into a a financial plan. And uh that's it for my presentation.
Counsel, do you have any questions? The one question I have, um, the McKenzie's presentation, there was concern about page thirteen, the same numbers were transferred over to page two. Is that not all corrected?
Yeah, that's what I just showed you.
Okay, no, I'm I'm thinking of the format. Okay, thank you so much. Any further question? Basically, financial plan adoption. And thank you, Brent, for all of the work you went through. Uh, Deputy Mayor Dornboss, mover, secondary by Councilor Recky, all in favor? Carrie. Item seven point two, tax levy by law four, three, nine, five, second reading. Be resolved, the council gives second reading to bylaw number four, three, nine, five, being a bylaw to approve the two thousand and twenty four tax levy as amended. Yes, that's Minister. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Mondor, seconder. Counselor Schlecker, ready for the comments? All in favor? Carrie. Now this will be recorded vote. Be it resolved that council give third reading to bylaw number four, three, nine, five, being a bylaw to approve the two thousand and twenty four tax levy as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Hunt, seconder. Deputy Mayor Dornboss. All in favor? Great. It's been anonymous, Lisa. Resolution uh seven point four, two thousand and twenty three surplus appropriation to reserves. Whereas the Council of the R M St. Andrews has established reserve funds for specific purposes. Adware asked for the period ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. The municipality realized an operating surplus in the general operating fund. Therefore, be resolved that council approved the following amounts arising from the general operating surplus of nine hundred thousand be transferred into the following reserves. Replacement of machinery machinery and equipment reserve, four hundred and fifty thousand. Fire equipment replacement reserve, three hundred thousand. Office and office equipment replacement reserve, fifty thousand. Rec- recreation reserve, fifty thousand. Emergency road upgrade reserve, fifty thousand, totaling nine hundred thousand dollars. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconder. Counselor Hunt, any for the comments? All in favor? Carrie. Check detail report. Be resolved that council approved the May eighth, two thousand and twenty four check detail reports. Counselor Schleyker, seconded by Counselor Hunt. Any comments?
I have six questions. We're thinking with answer group, he's had.
Would they have any comments?
Uh, question for the like, maybe to Council of Feeblecorn. Vehicles in the fire department, like, does the does the north end have a separate vehicle for doing fire department work in the in the south end?
As far as I know, they have a spare truck to to take out of district.
But we don't hear though.
Uh, no, if we're taking a truck out, we all our trucks, all the trucks in the center hall are all um are designated for uh a purpose. So if they're out of the district, we're losing either a medical truck or a grass park truck.
So either we need a truck or we pay mileage, like we get paid mileage and we go and do things and so you know, I just, we're criticizing, not criticizing, I understand questioning, and you have great to do that, but questioning. Um, and then and does does they go through the manager of safety?
Yeah, manager of safety is looking at 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 the whole enterprise and how we do things and and you know, we're looking at, you know, even further than fire, we're looking at our 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 car allowance policy on how we operate things. So you know, we're we're knocking things down as we come to them. And Jordan's got a a simile. He's got to be doing his job for a while, understanding how it works and and what people are doing versus I bring down the hammer on something.
Counselor Schleyker.
It's not that I'm picking on any one person. It's just that we're trying to say, and I want if either everyone gets it or no one gets it. It's just not fair.
But you can't have it the same if they don't have a vehicle here. So then we spend fifty thousand dollars on a vehicle. Mileage is pretty cheap. So as long as it's conducted properly and that's and that's the.
Well, that's why it's gotta be looked at too. Some of the checks I questioned. And myself.
But how can you question? The health is there, but you don't have the details though, do you?
Some do, some don't.
Okay. As long as we're getting to the bottom of that.
Yeah, just make it the same all the way across.
Uh, okay, so Counselor Schleyker, Counselor Hunt. So any further comments, questions, all in favor? Carrie. Next item, correspondence for action. Be resolved that council agree to host the Red River Basin Commissioner Norchup to meeting on June twenty seventh, the council chambers and purposes and in at our office. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Wander, seconder. Counselor Hunt. Any for the comments? Oh, we don't need who? Do we need this one who's attending? Well, Counselor Wander is on the committee, yeah.
So do we need a resolution if we want to amend it?
Yeah.
Okay, and and it's only our way anyway, but it's.
We're holding it in St. Andrews.
I know.
So I'd like to see.
I, that's why I want to go to it.
I'd like to see, you know, I I think that Red River Basin, uh you know, that it's it's vital for Red River Basin to be healthy for St. Andrews. A great deal of our communities on the water, right? And we're holding it in this first time we've had it in St. Andrews. So they asked us to take a turn. So I'd like to see at their A G M, I'd like to see a few of our council there.
So Counselor Hunt.
Yeah.
Counselor Feeblecorn.
Yeah.
Counselor Schleyker.
I'll be there.
Counselor Maraki. I am booked at another event. It's the craft thing.
I'll be there. This is a time.
And our C A O. So then and further be resolved. Following members will be attendants, Counselors Hunt, Counselor Feeblecorn, Counselor Schleyker, or Counselor Markey and C A O. Right, everybody? All in favor? Carrie.
Lisa, can you reply to? Tell them.
R S, R C S C C Deerwood Seventy Fifth Annual Ceremonial Review. Be resolved that we authorize to attend um the seventy seven R C S C C Deerwood Seventy Fifth Annual Ceremonial Review. Being held on June fourth, two thousand and twenty four, being celebrated. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Maraki, seconded. Counselor Feeblecorn. Counselor Maraki, will you be attending? Who will be, would like to attend?
Who? Anyone else? Any takers? Okay, all of them.
Mm hmm. Well, thank you, Counselor Maraki. All in favor? Carrie. Intralight Tourism Association A G M, be resolved that we authorize to attend the Intralight Tourism Association, the A G M being held May twenty third in Gimli. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, seconder. Deputy Mayor Dornboss. Well, normally Justin is on the committee, so Justin here, we don't need a resolution.
Just for the A G M part of it.
Okay. Anyone else wish to attend? Okay, so let's, Counselor Feeblecorn, all in favor? Carrie. Um, St. Andrews Airport, A G M, be a result that we authorize to attend the St. Andrews Airport Inc.'s annual A G M being held June tenth in St. Andrews. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconder. Counselor Schleyker, who will be attending the A G M? Counselor Schleyker. Um, you will be.
We're automatically.
You're on the board automatically.
And I mean, we drive it back from.
Or we get back that day from Calgary up to Jam, and then we have a big council meeting the following the next day. But I guess I'm assuming, I attempted emails all about that, but I never heard that. So I assume it's still gonna, they're not able to change the date.
We we changed it already, did we not? It was supposed to be the twelfth, we changed it to the tenth.
No, it's the other way around. Wait a second, it's on the twelfth now.
Hmm.
Letter says the tenth.
This letter says the tenth. I'm pretty sure the twelfth was changed to the tenth.
Uh, let's see.
The twelfth is the anniversary celebration, right?
Yeah.
Through July.
In July.
July.
And this is their A G M. Is this the one it's being held at large?
Yes.
Well, I can't remember, Counselor, but do you remember what time our flight gets to?
I don't recall.
Seems to me it was, you wanted to be the early bird. Seems to me it's morning, like by noon.
Probably by noon. I think it is. Yeah, I think we land around noon anyway.
Okay. So are you able to then?
I can tend, sure.
Well, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
You're not going to work that day, are you? Okay.
It is the tenth, uh, there.
Okay.
Correspondence from Zach.
Okay, well, okay, Counselor Schleyker, I'll be attending. Counselor Hunt, you're not able to. Counselor Maraki, apparently all of council goes. Um, Brent, will you be attending?
Yeah.
Counselor Feeblecorn. Counselor Wander.
No, I can't.
Okay, I think I've got everybody. Yeah, listen to, okay, all in favor? Carrie. St. Andrews Airport Anniversary Celebration, be resolved that be authorized to attend the St. Andrews Airport Anniversary Celebration being held July twelfth, two thousand and twenty two, at St. Andrews Airport. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Wander, seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn. Will all council be attending that day? It's it's just a come and go, like.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll have to check my schedule, but hopefully.
Okay, all of all of council. All in favor? Carrie. Um, oh, Counselor Markey, I saw on here the attachment, the plane plane ride information. Does the public, the public gets to see that other than on our our agenda? Like if there's a lot about a town.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, actually, uh, what's gonna be happening is uh what we do in advertising in the the weeks uh coming up. Um. Sherry just printed us off a little a little poster that we posted around. So.
You know, everybody, yeah.
But there was something where you had to.
Flip it over on the back, yes. So if I, four hundred dollars for the hardware, three hundred plus, plus a member.
If you were, you can know.
Another one.
No, I just read the application we had, but uh.
It's one thing to clarify a drop that uh they they changed the date from June the twelfth to June the tenth because June the twelfth, our honors, it's not available. So that's about to change.
Very nicely done, you guys.
Anyway, um. Just a note, uh, yeah, we're gonna be advertising in the um the celebrate record and uh we're actually gonna be advertising on the radio station from Gimli uh that week. I'm gonna pass up a few posters around, uh, perhaps flyers, beautiful places. Uh. Uh, peanut with ball cordons around here, things like that. That's how that goes. Apparently we've got, uh, I believe, three uh, three rides booked already, so that's that's a good thing. The focus on advertising early is really to get these rides booked. As um, yeah, it costs us a lot of money to get these aircraft here and we want to make sure that uh that they're going, that those propellers are turning all.
Well, that's it, plane ride information. I don't counsel you for that, but the, you have cardiac problems. I'm not for that.
I don't know. If I can find a plane I can get into, I'm.
Okay, next item, nine point six. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the A M M Intralight District meeting be held June nineteenth in Stonewall. Was it, I'll be attending. Who else is be attending the A M M District meeting? The whole day.
Put my name down. I'm trying to change an appointment, office appointment.
Deputy Mayor Dornboss. I know, but this is in the morning from the. Oh. Counselor Wander.
I'll be at work, so.
Okay, Brent, you'll be going. Attorney Mayor, can we get a mover on a second there for that? Yeah, be a result, oh, can I get a mover, please? Counselor Wander. Counselor Schleyker, seconded, so be a result, Mayor Sill. Counselors Hunt, Deputy Mayor Dornboss and C A O. Attend the A M M.
Is there a cost for that? They just talk about, is it ten dollars? There's no, no cost? Okay. By council, I don't make it, there's no, doesn't matter.
But they order food, so they want to know who's going. All in favor? Carrie.
I believe mine, I can make it. Here you go.
Next is the past grad gathering, crystal award celebration, be resolved the council authorized sponsorship amount of one hundred dollars for the past graduation gathering and crystal award celebration, which are both being held at Lord Sucker, Regent Cocker, and Hands of Ice School in Sucker. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconded, Counselor Wander, check this, the same amount we donated last year. All in favor? Carrie.
You missed nine point seven.
Oh. I didn't. Oh, because I don't have a uh, I don't have the resolution printed. I love that. Nine point seven. Oh. Gone.
So it's for Manitoba Good Roads for yard competition, so if anybody knows a farmyard or even a um residential, a residential yard that is beautiful, um, that would require us nominating it, let us know or think about it. I think the deadline was June twenty seven, so.
I got one.
So, but you need to look at the criteria though of what, you know, what is involved in the criteria because there's no point in nominating somebody if they don't meet their criteria, because it goes on a point system of one hundred points, so. So I'll um.
Okay, so if anybody has anything like, just pass the odds directly to Counselor Hunt.
Yeah, for.
And to everybody else.
You are a certification, uh, it can be farm and and non-farm. Thank you.
Okay, Lord Sucker, Regent Morgan, Civil Division, past graduation ceremony May twenty ninth, Sucker. Be resolved, well, I attended that, authorized to attend the Promoting Aboriginal Student Success Grad Gathering being held May twenty ninth, Sucker. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornboss, Deputy County Counselor Wander. All been attending. Anyone else like to go? Mayor Sill, be attending. All in favor? Carrie. The past Crystal Gala Luncheon, be resolved well, be authorized to attend the Promoting Aboriginal Student Success Crystal Gala Luncheon, which is held June fifteenth in Sucker. Could I have a mover, please? Uh, Counselor Maraki, seconder. Counselor Mondor. I will be attending. Anybody else? All in favor? Carrie. Arm Charity Golf Tournament, be resolved that be authorized to attend the Arm Charity Golf Tournament, be countable as first day in Sucker. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Hunt, seconder, Deputy Mayor Dornboss. Who would like to attend? Counselor Feeblecorn. Counselor Hunt. Deputy Mayor Dornboss.
I was the best player on my team.
Okay, and the C A O, that's one team. That's what you need, right?
They put you with people in a way, so what more is this?
Well, just for the record, I was with the deputy mayor and Counselor Feeblecorn. I stated I was the best player.
Why? You guys aren't very good then. Pretty sure we won.
Thank you.
In your mind. Everybody wins a prize.
He didn't tell me that. Okay.
Participation.
Counselor Hunt, Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconded, all in favor? Gary. Manitoba Intervent Caucus Meeting is tomorrow. Uh, be a result that be authorized to attend. The Manitoba Intervent Caucus Meeting being held May sixteen, St. Andrews. That one mover too. Counselor. Feeblecorn, seconded by Counselor Maraki. Okay, I'll be attending, I'm on it.
Yep.
Vice Chair, Counselor Maraki. Counselor Schlecker, you indicated moving, you are attending? Counselor Schlecker?
Where are you providing him, the St. Andrews Community Club?
I sent in. I sent in that we're four people we're attending.
You're you're going, well, your emails to us, it tells in four left better officials.
Yeah.
We, well.
I just wanted to.
Counselor Schlecker, but there was no, some didn't reply at all.
Yeah, so we could clarify it today, I just wanted to give them a heads up, right?
I mean. It's at three o'clock at the St. Andrews Community Club. So, myself, Counselor Maraki, Counselor Schlecker, or you're deciding, and who else is attending? Well, who else could ever go in? Yeah, you're gone.
I'll go and Lisa's gonna come too.
Okay.
And she's gonna take some pictures of the.
It's only about an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah.
Uh, President, heard this chair said.
It was a very good meeting last time there, so.
Yeah, but it's different speakers.
Oh, I know, but it was just like, it was a good gathering.
Okay, so Mayor Sewell. Uh, Counselors, uh, Maraki and Schlecker. Lisa and Fred. Hey, all in favor? Gary. Okay. Now we have. Mid nine point one. Oh, we did the.
Yeah.
Cuz I never had anything put there, it was. I print everything out, and if there was no attached. Nine point one, here's a funding request. For fixing feral felines and for tails of freedom, a donation request. Um, this is new. Um.
We have, right, Senator Mayor, nine point one four. Manitoba Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Tour Networking Dinner.
No, I'm on, I'm just dialing one two. Is there something for a a resolution? Cuz I press one outs, or excuse me. No, so that's okay, so is council agreement support them for a hundred dollars?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
So then be it resolved, a hundred dollar donation be. Uh, given to fixing feral felines and tails of freedom.
Yeah.
Okay, could I have a mover please? Counselor Schlecker. Counselor. Counselor Wander, seconds, all in favor? Gary. Lisa, about that? Next one is, um. Manitoba Chamber Economic Development. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the Manitoba Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Tour Networking Dinner. Being held June nineteenth. At six P M in Gimli. Um. Counselor Feeblecorn, you don't need a resolution cuz you're on that committee, are you able to attend?
So I can have that.
You can or you can? You can? Okay, so Counselor Feeblecorn. Did anybody else like to attend?
Yeah, I would.
And Counselor Maraki. I'm just checking my calendar. Seems to be on. No, that's the AMM District Meeting. And that's Red River planning board here. No, okay, so then be a result, Counselor Feeblecorn, Counselor Maraki attend, all in favor? Oh, I need a mover, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconder, Counselor Schlecker, all in favor? Gary. Correspondence for information is all attached, does anybody have anything they? Wanna discuss or bring up? Not move forward. D S T and Tax Inquiry. Um, there is an attachment. Um. Thank you, but I guess Tim has left my question, twenty twenty three is not on here, it's just twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Are the filings up to date?
Yeah.
Does it? For twenty twenty three?
Yeah.
Even, I think. Anybody else have any questions? I'm gonna frame it, it took from last year again. It doesn't say anything. Anyway. Item twelve, new business, R F D municipal land purchase request. There is the on theme that a portion of undeveloped and rollouts situated between row numbers four three one three hundred. Or six four one seven hundred, six four one seven fifty. Six four one seven five five and six four one eight five zero is not required for municipal purpose. Purposes. Whereas the adjoining owners of land have requested to purchase. Purchase a portion of said road allowance. To consolidate with their properties described. As lots four and five, block four, plan one six six two four Winnipeg Land Titles Office. And lots one and two, block five. Plan one six six two four Winnipeg Land Title Office. To create two continual lots within municipal. Therefore, be a result that the Council of the Arms of St. Andrews hereby declares. Dead road allowances served. And further authorizes the preparation of a bylaw for sale. Transfer and consolidation of said road allowance. To the adjoining landowners, Anthony Allison. I was sorry, my page cut off, and David Woods for the purchase price of one thousand dollars. Well, it's all cost incurred by the municipality. To facilitate the land sale and set traps. Um, could I get a mover please? Counselor Hunt, seconder. Counselor Wander. Um, Lisa, would you like or Brad?
I can speak on it, yeah, so I've been speaking with the Wood family regarding this potential purchase for a while. Uh, and just now, I I do have some supplemental information regarding the value that they put in for the one thousand dollars and how it was based on that. Pass this around, I'll give it to everyone's. And also a map, the final page there that might uh. Help visualize the area. Can you get you a copy? So I'll let you all read that, but uh, on the final page there, there is a map that coincides with the one on the R F D that kinda helps visualize. So they own several parcels, the Wood family owns several parcels around this road allowance, it's undeveloped. Likely never will be, uh, prone to flooding, they'll establish berm or make in portions of the area. Personally, I did attend the site uh, last year, my previous position, so I've seen it firsthand. Um, they're looking to purchase that and then consolidate it amongst their various properties and then. And and they would consolidate into two separate titles. So that they have the portion off of Kernstad ties into a portion of this road allowance. And then they have. On the map, they're identified as lot three and four would also be consolidated with the southerly portion of the road allowance. They've also had similar discussions with the town of Winnipeg Beach. For the potential purchase of. The piece that's identified west of two. It's that flagstick, flagstick portion, um, so very similar, um. Discussions that they're having with the town there, whether that's just an easement or right of way access to access this property that would be consolidated, but. They put in a request to purchase for one thousand dollars. And as stipulated in the uh. End up there, the. The uh, appraiser has uh, given a reason for the evaluation of a thousand dollars based on the surrounding properties. When their assessment.
And if I, this is around. All kinds of.
Just south of Kernstead, bro.
But this is around there, we're going right.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our municipal lawyer also asked for the town as well, and we've been in discussion back and forth, they have no. Dispute to this uh, potential sale or purchase for closing of the road. And we've had legal opinion for the closing of the road as well, that it will cause any issues, so.
Okay, how do we? Okay, we have Counselor Hunt, Counselor Wander, all in favor? Gary. Thank you, Brandon. Uh, signing of development agreement. Whereas the developers requires in terms of development agreement, we need to follow the condition of approval. For subdivision S twenty two. Two nine six one. And whereas the development agreement has been prepared to include the items deemed necessary by the municipality. Including an engineered drainage plan. Divocation of a three meter wide area buffer along Muckel Creek. Measured in length from the ordinary high water mark restricting development. In order to stabilize banks and any other standard deemed necessary by the municipality. Now therefore, be a result that the Arms of St. Andrews authorize signing of the del- development agreement. With Dennis and Marilyn Palmer upon payment of any development and administrative charges, could I have a mover please? Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconder. Counselor Wander, uh, admin, is anybody speaking to this?
Uh, very brief, uh, the subdivision was approved by council, a file number S twenty two two nine six one, short and sweet, there's an existing lot. Uh, it's along uh, Muckel Creek off of Edora Road, subdivision will create three new additional non-service lots. And uh, the capital development levies will be paid upon signing of the agreement. I've been discussing back and forth with the developer on this one, and he's satisfied with all the terms that are outlined within, so.
Great, thank you, any questions?
No.
All in favor? Gary. Item twelve point three, be a result that council, hereby council at the May twenty first, twenty twenty four, may you help me? May I have a mover please? Counselor Schlecker, seconder. Counselor Wander. Cuz it falls on the long weekend. So all in favor?
Sorry.
Gary. Board of Revision. Citizen members, whereas the Arms of St. Andrews desires to create a board of revision made up of three citizen. And whereas the administration wishes to place advertisements to receive applications. From interested citizens to be considered for a member of the board of revision for a three-year term. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the Arms of St. Andrews authorized the board of revision. To be made up of citizen members, members whenever possible. And further be it resolved, the council will be placement of advertising to solicit citizen interest, could I have a mover please? Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconder. Counselor Wander. Any questions?
How's? So the the options. Would it just citizens member or uh, blend them both?
No, they, they're gonna, Lisa and I, I think we talked about this back then. Um, preferably citizen members, but if we can't get, then elected officials, well, you know, will sit in.
Yeah, and I, I know we put three on, but it's a minimum of three.
So that's fine.
I know, we can have more than two of them, so.
Yeah, but we just named the three. All in favor? Gary. Age-friendly community open house, May fifteenth, be a result that. Be authorized to attend the Arms age-friendly community open house, which is being held May fifteenth, St. Andrews Community Club. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Feeblecorn, seconder. Deputy Mayor Dornboss, you know, I'm attending, anyone else wish to attend? Got a whole line, public, it's like the inaugural waiting on this, we passed a resolution last week. Okay, then, be a result, Mayor Sewell, be authorized to attend, could I have a, oh, oh, we have a mover, all in favor? Gary. We have no in camera, that's a move to the next meeting. No resolutions, adjournment. Be a result. That the council will be adjourned at eight thirty seven P M, could I have a mover please? Counselor Feeblecorn, seconder, Counselor Hunt, all in favor? Gary, second word, Jerry.
Recording stopped.